Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Aye.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to those here in the audience and those viewing us at home. I'm going to skip over item three, the minutes. I'm going to go right to item five, meet with the RMLD representative. We got a close rate increase that may be on hold, I hear, Mr. Noyd. Turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your time on the agenda. We had a CAB meeting the first Wednesday of December, and at that meeting it was announced to us that there was a proposal for a 9 percent rate increase for this fiscal year. Initially, they wanted to do it this month, and I contacted Chairman Delaney to make him aware of what was being proposed. In subsequent discussions with the Chairman of the Board of Light Commissioners, Mr. Stempak, a week ago today, I was able to get that rate increase held off until January. It's my understanding at the Light Commissioners' meeting last Thursday, they did vote to proceed with the 9 percent. We will have to have a CAB meeting prior to that, which is in accordance with a 20-year agreement. We have 30 days to act. Initially, I'll be right up front, my initial reaction was shock. But in having discussed this with the current General Light Department Chair, Colleen O'Brien, she gave me some updated figures on this. There is a rationale behind this, as much as I personally don't like it. If you look at the very bottom line, we start with the column for budgeted 2013. Projected revenues at that point was $3,280,000. The audited actual that came in was $1,783,000. At that point, it's on the sheet here, I'm sorry. If you look at the very bottom line where it says net income.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. At that point, the yellow flag should have gone up to somebody in the department. Our last rate increase was three and a half years ago. If you get into this year's budget, our projected income was $2 million, rounded off, $2,600,000. As of the audit, which was done in September, we have a projected income now of $380,000, which is about 3.27 percent. If we continue at this rate, we are going to end up the fiscal year in the red. And that's not even predicting a major snowstorm, some other major event that could potentially just wipe this out within less than a month. With the next column over, it says the reforecast column at 9 percent. If that's to be enacted, we would end the fiscal year at just over $2 million. And she did go on to project, we are in the process right now of doing a cost of study analysis. There is another projected rate increase of 3.9 for FY '15, which would then bring us up to 2.7 million, or basically 6.3 percent, 6.9 percent, I'm sorry, which is about where we like to be at the end of any given fiscal year. Again, we should have had, my take on this, we should have been advised of a smaller rate increase probably about a year and a half ago, which did not happen. A lot of this came to light with her taking over in July. It's unfortunate she got landed with this predicament, and it's unfortunate for everybody concerned, but the bottom line is, if we don't do something, that fourth column over is what we're going to end up with, just over $300,000, and we could end up in the red if we have one major event. So I wanted to bring this to the board's attention. Again, we are going to, the CAB is going to call for a meeting sometime within the 30-day window. It'll be before, the commissioners will meet again the last Wednesday of January, and they will take our recommendation under advisement. At this point, again, I wanted to bring the Board of Selectmen up to date on this. It's not exactly what I wanted to do at this time of the year, but given the fact that we could end the year in the red, or even before the end of the fiscal year in the red, I wanted to bring everybody up to speed on this.
John, in the operating revenue between sales of electric base and sales of electric
fuel, I'm looking at like a $5 million difference between this year and the audited amount, the budget amount versus the audited amount. What's driving that? Is that people using less power?
Correct. That's another part of the driver in this equation. We're stagnant. We have had no new sales growth in a year. Again, this is something that should have been picked up on a year ago. If it was, I can't honestly say, because it was never brought to anybody's attention.
Which says the cost of fuel, or what you're paying for electricity, I'm not sure I fully understand how to read this, is costing you a lot more. So what's driving the cost of energy?
Gas, for one thing. Gas has started to rise, and the problem is, a lot of our generators that we buy from are now on gas for their fuel.
Versus coal?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And the spike, the spike is going to get worse. I don't know if you saw the article, and I think it was a week or two ago in the Globe, there's a potential for another major gas spike between now and the end of the winter. We have tried, I don't know how many were on, that are on the board now, were here about five or six years ago, with a collapse of Calpine, which at that point was our major source of supply. After that collapse, and we got everything straightened out, when I say "we," both the CAB and Board of Light Commissioners at the time, really started to press on the fact that we wanted a more broad-based portfolio. We wanted suppliers with different means of energy, different fuels. One of our, one of our biggest suppliers right now is Hydroelectric, Swift Hydroelectric, out in the Pepperell area. We have negotiated with Concord Steam, they're not online yet, out of Concord, New Hampshire. They're going to be a coal-fired, I'm sorry, a wood-fired operation. But a lot of our, a lot of our suppliers right now rely on gas, and we have no control over that. Gas goes up, you know, our cost of buying energy goes up. That's another driver in this problem, too. Again, had we had a smaller increase a year or so ago, this probably wouldn't be as severe as it is now, but we, we're just, we're just in a predicament here.
Michael.
With this such a large increase, are there any programs for the senior citizens to work with MRLD?
Yes, there is. Yeah, they can, they can go on a program by contacting MRL, yeah.
I can't see.
RMLD, you got me saying it now. RMLD, there is a program in place, yes.
So they just have to call the office, and somebody can pick them up?
Yes, they should contact Energy Services.
John, we're looking at four and a half in January, four and a half sometime before the end of June, and then three and a half at one point in FY '15.
Well, what they're looking at now is the 9 percent in January.
January this year.
Three. So it would go into effect in February. Originally, they wanted to do it now, and I was one of the strongest opponents of that. So I've held it off by two months. But what will happen is, this will go into effect in February, and it will be in effect for five, the last five months of this current fiscal year.
Huge.
It averages out to about $3 per household, for a household of four. Again, I'm not happy with it, but given the fact that we could end up in the red, it's, you know, the old rock in the hard spot problem.
Can you explain that again? $3, can you, how did you get there? The $3?
Based on the kilowatt hours.
Oh, so it's an additional $3 to a kilowatt hour?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's residential. I don't know what it will do. One of my biggest concerns that I brought up to Mr. Stempak was, we have, in our, in our charts, we have a column called "schools," which is something that I promoted about five or six years ago, because schools at one time were built on the highest commercial rate, and it was killing them. So we, we made a split between the small commercial, the large commercial, and we put them in between, so it gives the schools a different rate, a lower rate than the large commercial. It gives them some benefit. But again, one of my concerns is, and I brought this to the chairman's attention, that going into the, now you're in the middle of a fiscal year, you're going to raise the rate 9 percent. It's 9 percent across the board for every category. So, you know, schools are already in a budget year. It's going to be tough on them, and I spoke with the business manager today. He's going to get me the actual figures of what the school has used from the beginning of this fiscal year to date.
Mr. Fode.
Well, we learned at our financial planning meeting on Friday, that the new school is actually going to be more dependent on electricity than less dependent on gas, which is a little bit of a surprise to me, but that's potentially an issue that they need to be aware of. John, the way I look at this, it seems to me to be a big problem for Redding Municipal Light. That is, declining revenue prior to the rate increase, which means lower demand for electricity. The market is kind of fixed, you know, we've built out, for the most part, Redding, North Redding, Wakefield.
Correct.
So you don't have an expanding marketplace unless you're going to some other community and try to sell them Redding Light electricity. Your overhead can't be reduced, because you don't have a lot of overhead. You know, you don't have overhead associated with generating electricity, you know? So what you've got is the maintenance of the wires and everything else.
Right.
So, you know, you're in a bit of a condundrum here. I can understand the need to increase the cost of electricity and delivery, but it's an interesting scenario that you're in.
That's a good point, because this is, this is an inherent problem in this business. Unlike a lot of other areas, we're, we're based a lot on costs that we have no control over. And again, if, if gas spikes tremendously, you know, again, it's the old rock in the hard spot, we, we can't do anything about it. And we've already seen a potential spike. In fact, again, in that, and I believe in that article on the gas situation a couple of weeks ago, National Grid is posed to put through a 30 percent rate increase next month. Even with this, and I'm, and I'm not, believe me, I'm not sugarcoating anything here, I want to keep this open and transparent, but of the Middleton, Wakefield, of the three municipals that are next to us, that we compare ourselves to, even with this rate increase, we are still going to be lower than they are. Not by much, but we will be lower. Peabody Light and Power is probably the next closest to us in the lowest rates. Wakefield Light and Gas is up, and so is Middleton.
Mr. Fode.
I appreciate that, John, I think you do a good job. I think the issue is not so much where we stand comparatively speaking to other municipalities, I think it's kind of stick of shock, you know what I mean?
Right.
You know, in February, all of a sudden, you're getting 9 percent, no, 3 percent in July. So I agree, I mean, it's probably not as bad had they done something over the last four years, you know, three years, that they should have done something, trying to keep things level, but, boy, 9 percent's kind of tough for people who are already having troubles as it is. So, I mean, there's not a lot we can do about it, I understand that, but I thank you anyway for putting it off as long as you could, you know, doing the work you did to do that.
Well, I certainly didn't want to have it hit a Christmas tree, because that's what they wanted. They wanted it this month.
Right. Yeah, you know, again, and I agree with you, you know, going back, someone should have caught this sooner. Hopefully now that they realize is they need to look five years out anyway, and figure out where they can, you know, kind of keep it on an even keel for the next five years, and not have the spikes and valleys.
Well, when you have the opportunity to read Colleen's cover letter that accompanied this, she is making a statement in there that going forward, starting with the conclusion of this current cost of study survey, there will be a six-year plan in place. And every six years, that will be updated, so that we don't get caught, even if there's a transition of personnel, which is part of what created this problem, there at least will be a plan in place, so that even if somebody new were to come in, they could move right in and see the plan and move forward with it. That's another part of the problem here, another one of the drivers. There was no plan, and she got caught in the middle of this. Unbeknownst to her, until, you know, we had the final audit in September. And it shows where we are right now at less than $400,000.
I understand the problem, but I do agree, Mr. Fode, it is a stick of shock.
When was the previous audit? I mean, I'm surprised that this, I'm surprised that this was news.
The audits are done once in the spring and once in the early fall.
All right, so we had prior audits, you know, why are we all of a sudden surprised? To me, it's...
Well, we had the transition, I'm not making excuses, but we had the transition of...
Was the audit not done in the spring because of that?
Huh?
Was the audit not done in the spring because of that transition issue?
No, it was done.
Even so, you get it done every six months, I mean, you're still going to see this trend over a period of time, and when they're forecasting things, it becomes very evident, for anybody who knows a lot of these things. And again, is it maybe just a difference in management style as far as how to address things, you know, maybe Vinnie had a different approach, and you have some new members on the board also, maybe with a different set of philosophies as to how to handle a situation and forecast, looking down the road?
I'll be right up front with you to answer your question, Steve. That is the problem, part of the problem, is the fact that when Vinnie left, we had interim situations. They became sticky at best. I think the board is aware of that, last, about, almost a year ago. I think that's when the real ball started to become dropped.
But it just, excuse me, it doesn't usually happen.
Certain things weren't picked up on, that's the problem. And that, this is one of the things that was not picked up on. As I say, a year, a year and a half ago, the yellow flag should have gone up when the 2012, 2013 figure came in, and we could, we could then see that it was, well, basically almost $2 million short of what we projected.
John, you know, Mr. Leder brings up a good point. It didn't happen overnight.
That's correct.
I think the biggest issue for me is trying to fix the problem overnight, and that's they're doing. You know, I think the town faced something similar to that when it was with our water several years ago, and the goal wasn't to, you know, I think the board had a, made a conscious effort not to say, okay, we need to recoup this money in the next six months. I think they need to look at it and say, you know, instead of 9 percent all at once, maybe it's four and a half, like Sean said, then maybe four and a half again in July, and try and recoup it over the course of the next year and a half to two years, as opposed to, again, the 9 percent, to try and get it where it needs to be by the end of this fiscal year. It's a, it's a huge stick of shock for people who are not, you know, not used to paying that, those kind of rates.
Correct.
And you brought a good point, I mean, businesses and schools who have their fiscal year budgets already set, it's, it's a huge shock.
I just know, I just did quick math, you know, I'm a household of four, but I know it's going to be more than $3 a month for me. I think, you know, RMLD should look at something, four and a half February, four and a half July 1, if they want to come in, three and a half next January, February, I think that's a better approach to take for the consumers.
It's $3 per kilowatt hour. That's what you said, right? It's going to be an additional $3 per kilowatt hour?
Per kilowatt hour.
Kilowatt hour?
Yeah, so you've got to look at your bill, look at what you've been doing each month per kilowatt hour, add $3 to it.
That's one of the things that I know myself and one of my counterparts from Wilmington are going to recommend, that we split this up incrementally. Again, that's the recommendation that we're going to give, well, hopefully we're going to give to the Board of Light Commissioners. The ultimate vote is theirs.
When is it?
We will meet sometime in January. I haven't set a date yet, because I just found all this information out now, but we have to meet within a 30-day timeframe to be in compliance with the 20-year agreement.
So your advisory board is going to meet before the RMLD?
They will meet the last Wednesday of January, right? And we will, we will give them a recommendation at that point. What they do with it, that's up to them.
Mr. Frisco?
So I really can't see in this spreadsheet you provided us, the capital improvements, where are they captured in the expense? What's the annual? The reason I bring it up is because, maybe kind of going along with Mr. Fode's making a recommendation on is, maybe you can pull back a little bit on some of your capital improvements. If you're buying more vehicles this year, maybe you pull back on those, try to save some of the expense, and try to do this, and spread this increase out a little bit. Make some reductions as well as, instead of just all increases.
Capital would be under the operations expense. In the budget book, it's broken down as to what, these are just heading line items. I do know, I do know one capital expense that I am probably going to recommend that they hold off on. If you look at the cover of the calendar, Station Number One was scheduled to be completely rehabbed inside now, and that's probably going to be something that I'm going to request that they hold off on for a year or two.
I thought you were going to say no calendars. They're going to say no calendars.
Actually, you want, they want them back, is that what they're asking for?
Mr. Fode.
John, they don't require a DPU?
Yes, they do.
Approval, oh, they do. So the recommendation should be made, and then it'll go to the DPU?
That's correct.
For approval for them?
That's correct. That's why I say February would be the earliest now that they'd be able to do anything.
Is it for any rate increase, or is it outside a certain parameter?
Outside a certain parameter, and this is going outside of...
DPU would approve a certain rate increase up to a certain percentage.
Right.
This would exceed that, so maybe the approval for above whatever DPU has set as a...
That's correct.
Public hearing, John?
DPU, I think...
No, I'm talking about, is...
Oh, yeah, the, the, what Light Commissioners would be an open meeting, yes. Yeah.
And date hasn't been set, forgot yet.
They are meeting the last Wednesday of January, I know that for positive fact.
What else? No.
Whatever, what do you need from us?
How would you like me to vote? I'm your representative.
Well, I can only speak for myself, and I'm in agreement with, you know, they have a problem, they need to solve it, but trying to do it all at once doesn't seem to be of the best interest of the, of the users either. So, you know, they try to spread it out, and then also try to provide it with some level of managing expenses internally, and maybe try to make some reductions where they can, where it makes sense, rather than just try to make all the increase all at once.
Mr. Chairman? I tend to concur, too, that they really should look at trying to phase it in, but not just for the repairs of their homeowners, but also from a budgetary standpoint here. You know, 9 percent, almost over a half a year, is really 4 percent increase in the electric bill for our, you know, schools and town buildings, which was not budgeted for, and no contingencies built in for that, that I'm aware of. You know, so now we're talking about likelihood of someone coming to the Finance Committee for unforeseen expense transfer, something that sprung on us rather late in the year. So they need to be a little more cognizant of that, and sympathetic, I know that they're aware of it, but, you know, cry a little bit louder, I guess.
Trust me, I'm going to. And again, I know one of my counterparts from Wilmington is going to also, because he's also the superintendent of public buildings over there, which they all come under him. So he's fully aware of what it would cost Wilmington.
Okay. Very good, Sam. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Two, two. Outside of the rate increase.
Thanks, Scrooge. Yes, Mr. Scrooge. I'd like to move to item six, the vote of secondary school building committee of partners settlement. Mr. Fode.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the settlement agreement between the Town of North Reading and James Nelson, Sheldon Nelson, Michael Skioli, and Nancy Skioli. Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to item four. Anyone here for public comment? Mr. Yul?
You skipped the minutes?
Yeah. We'll hand him to the next meeting.
Good evening, Jeff Yul, 427 Park Street, here in North Reading. Back in 2009, when I was on the board, I had recommended that there be a scheduled plan of reviews for departments, then police, fire, DPW, Town Hall, and, yes, the Board of Selectmen. My reasons for making that suggestion were for transparency purposes, that was the most important one, but to avoid any kind of conflict, ensure integrity of due process, take the process out of the hands of the Board of Selectmen by using a third, a third party, and to stagger the reviews about three to five years from, from their inception, depending on what reviews you decided were acceptable. Unfortunately, that idea was completely and unanimously rejected. The reason given to me at the time was, there's just no need for it. Now, at the time, and you can go back to YouTube, and you can review anything you'd like to, at the time, I warned of any type of upcoming possible conflicts. Had a planned review been in place at that time, had you, had we, had the board agreed to do that, any changes would have been based on a fair evaluation. The town administrator has represented the people of North Reading in the most professional manner possible. He is highly regarded by his peers for his knowledge, interpersonal skills, leadership of his subordinates, and respected town employees. More importantly, he puts the management of the town first. If you accept the idea suggested by the transcript to use a third party and use the suggested qualifications, you will have gone through a process only to hire the same person with a different name. I say this because I go back to my recommendation. It was a concern I had then, based on my observations, my interactions with the board and board members, and I realized that Selectmen, we come and we go. The town will always be here. The process that has to be in place has to protect the town. And by having such a due process of evaluating your departments, safeguards the community for, from perception that people will have, who will think that there's an agenda at I know from the beginning that there are members on the board... agenda at stake. I know from the beginning that there are members on the board that when they came forward, they had the best of intentions to do the best thing for the town, and I believe that is their intent, and I say that for all members of the board. But I think that you just need to begin to take it out of our, out of the, I'm not a Selectman anymore, am I? We need to take it out of, for future benefit, not necessarily this board, but for the future. Take it out of the hands of the board and leave it up to a due process that is objective and has a perspective that will honor the town the same way that the TA, Greg Balikonis, has done and represented our town for over eight years. So, just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Let's move to item seven, joint appointment, Hillview Commission. So there's a number of Hillview Commission members here? There's an update this afternoon. Does this not need to be a joint appointment?
Yes, I had a conversation with the Chairman of the Hillview Commission today, and since this is the, filling a position upon the expiration of Mr. Rocco's term, which is on December 31st, it does not require a joint vote. In the past, the joint vote is only when there is a vacancy that is created in an existing appointment. So, I apologize, I apologize to the members of the Commission who showed up on a cold night, but I'm sure that this, this is a necessary vote. So, it is a board, would ask the board through its normal protocol to put forward a recommendation.
Mr. Prisco, as a liaison, do you have a statement regarding this particular appointment?
Yeah. As you can see, there's a lot of applicants, a lot of interest in people joining the Hillview Commission. You know, the state of the Hillview Commission, where things are now, one of the values that Mr. Rocco brought was his experience with hotels and even the whole restaurant industry. Missing, losing that on the board is going to be very difficult. So, having a lot of discussion with the Hillview Commission members, we really went through the applicants to try to find someone that can bring that experience back, try to replace him with someone with that experience. You know, we've had a lot of challenges. We lost our, our pub downstairs for now, and we'd like to bring somebody back onto the Commission that can help us maybe try to restore that or at least try to, and also, we've got to make some investments in that ballroom, but we need someone that has that restaurant knowledge. So, going through the list, Mr. Daniel Doherty is the individual that I'm going to make a recommendation to the board nominate for the commission.
Mr. Stack, do you care to speak on behalf of the Commission?
First, I'd like to concur that the terrible thing you brought the other members out on a cold night, you know. They're probably going out for dinner afterwards, but that's okay. Yeah, we, Ed had been on the Commission for seven years, or more, I thought, but he brought an expertise. As you know, we're a working board. When we replace people, we try to place, replace them with the same expertise that the person has is leaving. We've saved an awful lot of money over the years with lawyers, accountants, and Ed was instrumental in redoing the ballroom upstairs and saved us quite a bit of money. If you have the, the knowledge, where to buy equipment, where to buy it from, it makes it much easier than bringing somebody from the outside. They have a vested interest in it. So, yeah, Dan actually popped up in the application, and he has the background which we're, which we're looking for. So, we would concur with that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Disappoint, Mr. Foody?
Just a follow-up.
Oh, sure, sure.
Again, I would like to publicly acknowledge Ed Rocco's service on the Hillview Commission. You know, he brought a lot of expertise, but also an awful lot of passion to it, and not just the expertise and the, and passion as far as the field of expertise that he has professionally, but driving force behind some of the projects undertaken and underwritten by the Hillview Commission, in particular, to our field, along with a whole lot of, a lot of other capital plans. And again, Ed and his wife Patty have decided to head a little further north, north of North Reading, and again, he and Patty have been tremendous contributors to the community. Your service on the Hillview Commission has been exemplary, and you did a far better job. He replaced me on the Commission, so he did a far better job than I ever would have. And again, it's greatly appreciated and acknowledged, and thank you for your service and wish you well up in Kalamazoo.
Well said, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Rocco, would you like to come up? You may want to come up.
Can I speak from here?
No, no, no. Thanks for asking, though.
Well, just real quick, it was a real privilege to have served in this Commission for seven years. I have two young children, and when my wife and I were looking for real estate about 23 years ago, I said the only drawback with North Reading is there's no public transportation. And what are we going to do with two strapping boys? How are we going to keep them busy and out of trouble? And I got to tell you, it's been nothing but a sheer pleasure to raise a family here in North Reading, a bunch of crowning jewels and IRP. Very privileged to have an opportunity to help out with Kids Spot and putting improvements in tennis courts, the Field Turf Committee, et cetera and so on, and the kids in this town really deserve something special. I think we really built something special here. People have always said that we're a town that's land-rich and maybe facilities poor, but I don't necessarily believe that because I think we have made some great improvements. And I can tell you that my two kids stayed out of trouble. They finished school, they went on to college, and just a great committee led by George Stack. And what a special enterprise you have here in having a golf course that can help feed public space, facilities for the youth without costing the taxpayers any money. And I know that George, being the oldest statesman and real patriarch, takes it very seriously, and we really are here, I think, for all the right reasons. And again, I want to thank you for your support. I guess I get renominated two or three times, and I needed the, the board support, the Selectmen's support to do that, and I want to thank my fellow Commissioners. We've had some very heated discussions, some sided on the side of the golf course. I was always siding on the side of the function facility and trying to put money back into it, and more times than not, I lost. But I lost gracefully, and I think it is important for my behalf to have somebody that's going to have some focus on the restaurant and the function facility. I think you do need to strike a balance, and if it's just all, you know, golf-associated members that have an interest in the golf course, I think you're going to be letting that building continue to deteriorate, and it certainly needs some money now. So, again, thank you. It's been a real privilege. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
On the motion, Mr. Foody? Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Daniel J. Doherty, 6 Susan Drive, to the Hillview Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2016.
It's going to be a roll call vote.
Roll call vote?
Yeah, you got to list everybody.
Oh, yeah, you have to.
Yeah, you can read them all.
My suggestion is, if you...
We had it.
We have another one for Mr. Hemmy, I believe.
But that's just a normal, that's being handled just as a normal appointment?
It's not at the bottom.
This also is a normal appointment, because it's, this is not for the unexpired term. This is for a full term expiring at the same time as Mr. Hemmy's. So, my suggestion is using the full motion that's here.
For both of them?
And again, Mr. Hemmy's name should be included on it.
It's right here.
So we had it, and then it was modified as a result of the joint, it was set up for the joint.
Yeah, page 14 is Mr. Hemmy's.
We have.
No, we have the exact one.
We have.
It's on the Hillview Commission.
Go back, read, read these names. Show Steve. Steve, we have it.
But as a matter of policy, we usually name, we usually include all of the...
Yes.
All the applicants.
On both?
On both. So Mr. Hemmy should...
This is, this is the motion.
I have.
Is Mr. Hemmy in here?
No, I'll add it.
Add Mr. Hemmy.
I'll add at the bottom.
And then, unless there are two open, two vacancies.
We had it set up as two separate motions, one for the replacement of Mr. Rocco, then one for the reappointment of, hopefully, the reappointment of Mr. Hemmy. So, we're going to combine it into one.
Oh, actually, there's one other member.
Okay.
Hemi, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following names for appointments to the Hillview Commission to fill a term through December 31st, 2016. There are two openings. Timothy J. Allen, 6 Toddocks Lane; Brian E. Blackwood, 8 U. B. Park West; Mark Christos, 4 Mentis Park, I'm sorry, Mentis Farm Lane; Christopher J. Cummings, 5 Oz and Howard Lane; Daniel J. Doherty, 6 Susan Drive; Paul D. Dorsey, 8 Magnolia Road; Joseph G. Giganti, 7 Willard Road; Joseph P. Gill, 30 Turner Drive; James M. Kiernan, 18 Turner Drive; Lauren E. McMullin, 4 Baldwin Lane; Peter Hemmy, 55 Lindor Road. Second. Okay, the motion is second. Mr. Prisco?
Daniel J. Doherty and Pete Hemmy.
Mr. Masari?
Daniel J. Doherty and Peter Hemmy.
Mr. Foody?
Daniel J. Doherty, Peter Hemmy.
Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Doherty and Mr. Hemmy.
Did she have votes, Mr. Doherty and Mr. Hemmy? It's unanimous. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
And the weekend's supposed to warm up, so.
Yeah.
See the green on our ass?
See a little, little green.
Get my longest drives this time of year.
I'd make loyal order Moose change of manager.
Now I can go feed my neighbor.
Oh, is this in here?
Yes.
Good evening, sir.
Hello.
And you are?
David Shuttner.
Okay, the proposed new manager.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell us what had occurred and the reason for the change?
John Stone has been our club manager. We refer to that position as administrator for the last five years. In August, he announced his retirement to us, that he would be retiring October 10th. So we had a brief space of time to even really look around the requirements of this position for Moose International. There's a few courses of certification you have to go through to be able to perform it, and some of the other bylaws, general laws associated with that position really limit the pool of people that are available and can do it. In those circumstances, I spent a bunch of time with John over the course of the last month that he was there to learn the ins and outs of everything that he did. He finally did retire October 10th, and the day before that, the, our board had an emergency meeting to appoint me as acting administrator. And over the ensuing months, they've been extremely pleased with what I've done, how I was able to maintain things, keep, keep up with them, and at the beginning of December, we had a more formal vote where they'd like to continue with me. In January, in ensuing months, I'll be getting more of the formal certification that the Moose requires, so I can take on that position as the regular appointee.
Floyd Murphy, do you have any questions?
Just as far as tips trained?
I personally don't have it. I've sat in on a bunch of sessions. We have several volunteers besides our volunteer bartenders that have taken it, so I'm familiar with a lot of material, and it's something that's been on my list to do for at least the last two years. And that is something before I got my full election or appointment that I planned to do. So that would be, I'm looking within the next three months.
It just, one of our requirements generally is to have the manager tips trained as long as, and also, along with other bartenders and whoever else is serving there.
Okay, so I, you know, if it helps out, I will expedite that as soon as possible, absolutely.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. And just, just as an aside, Mr. Shuttner and his family, longtime residents of the community, well-respected and good choice.
Very good. Mr. Balikonis, did you...
Mr. Shuttner, how many hours a week do you expect to be on premises?
Thirty-five hours at least.
So it's full-time?
It's a volunteer position right now, so...
Heck of a volunteer position.
Yes, it is. John was getting some remuneration. They asked me, they tried to give me some money, and where I was taking over and learning, I turned them down and said I didn't want it for right now. With the time that you need to take to do the administrative aspect, it's not too bad. It's like a couple hours a day. But I work closely with our bar manager, that's David Waterhouse, is in there a significant amount of time, and I, there's a lot of other activities that we're trying to run while we're there. We have the function hall upstairs, we have the school dances. At all the time for taking care of those, setting that stuff up, ordering the inventory. There's lots and lots of things to do. So, I'm actually there quite a bit to try and take care of a lot of the other details of what needs to go on.
Chairman, do you have just one last question, if you'd allow? What are the hours that alcohol is served on premises?
Our hours of operation are from during the weekdays, 3 to 11:30, and on Saturday goes from 12 to 12:30, 12:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m. Sundays is 12 p.m. to 9:30 p.m.
Thank you.
And the last license had hours that were beyond that. Our hours are a smaller window of when we're open, but the hours were like from 12 to 12:45, you know, each day, so...
The hours are uniform across the board, so what we just try to do is clarify the hours of operation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further, board members? Mr. Foody?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the change of manager for the Club All Alcohol Total License for the Loyal Order of Moose, 140 North Street, from John Stone to David Shuttner, David "Elo" Shuttner, Jr.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Team unanimous.
Thank you.
Passed a lot.
Thanks.
Item nine, Route 28 Motors, discuss license condition. I understand the attorney and... I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I will be recusing myself from any discussion and deliberations of the board regarding Route 28 Motors. It's a Class II license. I have a family member that also holds a Class II license, so I will be recusing myself, as I said, and from the deliberations, discussion, and vote.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board. My name is Andrew Schultz. I'm an attorney here in North Reading, also a resident of the town, who represent Route 28 Motors. I understand I had the opportunity to review the tape from the December 2nd meeting. I understand the board had some questions surrounding the renewal of the license, and I've had the opportunity, Mr. Foody and Mr. Prisco were kind enough to talk to me to discuss some of the conditions and some of the concerns that they had, which I had the opportunity to review with my client, and I would like to tonight address any of the concerns that the board may have with respect to renewal of this license. With respect to the license as a background, I understand Route 28 Motors was cited for some number of car violations back in the springtime of this year. I do know that when they originally were cited for these violations, that the town was unaware of the arrangement made back in 1999, 2000, when this matter of permitting was litigated before the Uber District Court. The actual permit and agreed-upon plan that was submitted and approved by the board back in, I believe it was late 99, early 2000, allowed for 26 cars, meaning 16 cars for sale, 10 additional cars, but no more than 24 in the lot and two in the bay. So 16 for sale, another 10 that could be worked on, so a total of 26 cars. I believe that was a cause of some confusion. I've expressed the board's concerns to my client. He's advised he's in full compliance with the statute right now. He certainly takes this matter seriously. I understand the board's here to set rules for the town and certainly be respected. I'm a business owner in town, too. I own commercial space at Park Place. I understand we don't want Route 28 looking like an eyesore. So, since Mr. Vatili has taken over the property, he's painted the place, he's put new asphalt in, he's put flowers and horticulture in the front, he's trying to be a good neighbor, certainly wanted to address the board's concerns tonight. I think one ambiguity that does need to be brought up in the licensing is, again, 16 cars for sale, 10 additional cars, meaning eight in the lot, 24 in the lot, and then two in the bays. There is a question of whether, if a customer comes in, or I use the example, a mailman comes in, does that count towards the 26 or not? That is an ambiguity in the license, which I think is certainly open for interpretation, and we would ask the board if we can get some clarity on that. We want to make sure that Route 28 Motors is following the board's directives on the licensing on that, and I'd like to answer any questions the board may have. I know there was some current center 's voice at the last meeting.
Mr. Foody?
I'll start. When the current owner came before us, it was, it was four Selectmen who were eligible to vote. Mr. O'Leary, as always, recuses himself. It ended up being a three... It ended up being a three-to-one vote. I felt that he should have the opportunity, he should not be responsible, because he worked for the prior owner. I felt he shouldn't be responsible for the sins of the prior owner. However, I did, I did tell him that I would be watching it very carefully. I go by there every day. I have a log, which unfortunately I have with me. I can tell you, there are more occasions than not that he had over thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three vehicles in there. I can tell the difference between, by the way, between a mail truck and a coffee sale. So it wasn't a mail truck. And majority of vehicles that were in there were for sale. They were, they were located for sale. There was no, you know, I walked by there several times. You know, once, okay, he's told. Twice, he's told. Three times, he's told. Mr. Valiakonis has to waste his time, which he has more valuable things to do, have his employees go by there and talk to him. That didn't work. Talk to him again, that didn't work. Sight him, that didn't work. And I don't know what to tell you.
Well, I think your point's well taken, if I may respond to that. He has the message. It's been made very clear. I think canceling a business permit for, you know, one of the larger businesses on the main drag of North Reading would have a chilling effect on business. I would assert that to the board. I can assure you, after speaking with him and getting involved with the case, and I've been working with Attorney James Senior on this, who's now in semi-retirement, this isn't going to happen again. He's got the message. We would ask for the board to renew the license. It will not happen again. He's made, I've stressed to him very clearly what the board, and I speak to the board as a whole, not just with you, Mr. Fode.
Appreciate it.
I've certainly relayed your concerns. I know Mr. Fode and Mr. Prisco had serious concerns. I saw it at the last meeting. That's well taken. I would like the board, if they could, to give an opportunity to address this. I don't think you're going to have this problem again. He's arranged for off-site vehicle storage in Reading, so I don't think you're going to have an issue of too many vehicles on the property. He's trying to be a good neighbor. Again, he's put money into the property, he's trying to clean up what was a property that was not in district repair, but he dressed it up, made it look a little nicer for curbside appeal. I just think it sends a wrong message to the town. As a business owner myself, we have such little commercial tax base in this town compared to other towns. You know, I don't think, I understand the board's concerns. We just ask for an opportunity to have the license renewed and let Mr. Patil show that he certainly takes it seriously. He has gotten the message loud and clear, and that's all I can say. And he certainly is going to respect whatever the board does. We would ask if the board give him a chance on this.
I think the last thing I would want to do is see another vacant, you know, storefront or parcel on Route Twenty-Eight. But, you know, bless you. But the fact that, you know, you keep saying he's got it now, what, what finally, how did he finally get it now?
He's had the advice of both the Attorney Senior and myself, who have both been lawyers for a number of years, that expressed to him what the board's purpose is, why the board has rules, what the board's rules are, and how these rules have to be followed. He's gotten very strong legal advice. That's all I can say. I've explained to him, this is it. You've got a chance of losing your license here. Okay? He's got a lot of money invested into this business. He gets the message, Mr. Fode, and the rest of the board. He certainly respects what you guys are trying to accomplish. I do as a business owner and a resident and a taxpayer myself. You know, I understand your concerns. I can assure you, I have vehemently explained to him what he needs to do. He knows that. I don't, I would be shocked if he ever had this problem again.
Anything else?
No, I appreciate the time you took today to give me a call, and so I could share you some of my concerns. But I was the one person that did vote no last year, because, you know, you were with the company for a long time before you took it over, and, you know, we still had the concerns. The issues were still happening. And I didn't feel that you were sincere enough and willing enough to make any changes, and it turned out to be right. And it's unfortunate, the town has to spend a lot of time and energy. Mr. DeCola has made the time to go down there on several occasions, and nothing got corrected. I mean, it's, we don't want to, I'm agreeing with Mr. Fode. We don't want to have an empty place, but we also can't have one person follow, have everyone else follow the rules and not one individual. It makes it very difficult for us, so.
And this man does have the, I don't mean to interrupt, Mr. Prisco, it's okay. He certainly has the advice of a legal counsel now, who's really told him what he needs to do. And I don't know if he quite, it's fair to say, he's had that advice in the past. And I don't think you're going to have this problem again with Route Twenty-Eight Motors. We would just ask for the board's kindness in granting the license, and Mr. Patil knows his obligations here.
If I may just say something, please. Thank you for your time again, and allow me to come here back.
Could you get closer to the mic? It's not for us, it's for the listening audience.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you very much for allowing me the time to be here, and I express, you know, why I'm here and why I should be in business. Couple of things is to answer, one thing you said, I've worked for this company many years. I was there from ninety-five to two thousand. There were many people who came in this business and left. There was one owner that owned it, but he leased out the company to different people. So I wasn't there in the last ten years straightforward, but one thing I want to just make clear. Second, when I was there, I was as a salesperson. I wasn't getting to the, involved in the, what the rules and regulation and how, but how they dealt with the town. And when I came in last time, you gentlemen, we expressed your concern about the number of cars, I remember, and I doing my best to, as I said that day, I will do my best to stay in that framework. However, one I think Mr. Fode said earlier about the tickets and the inspectors coming down, I was not in violation when the inspector came. When he came and he gave me tickets, four cars over, two cars over, they were all under the twenty-six numbers that was supposed to be on the lot.
I'm just going to stop you there. You're not, you're not, you're not helping yourself? Because both sides were under a misunderstanding that we now know. When you were here before, that limit was sixteen. So I don't think you're helping yourself by saying, well, I was over the sixteen, but I was under the actual number I was supposed to have. I think your lawyer did a good job for you.
Sure. If you could please express, I'm sorry, Mr. Delaney, if you could express to the board that you fully understand the twenty-six car limit, when we've been through this a number of times?
Yeah, I understand what, where I should be at this point. And I've acquired extra help and space to make sure we don't. I also have a camera system so that.
Well, you had, you had your space in Reading. You told us that a year ago.
Yeah, but I also got some reeds. I got a couple of other spaces to put more cars there. And I, and I'm not there twenty-four-seven, but I can assure you, out of the business hours, I told everybody, I mean, I have few employees, and I told them, if I don't get a license, they're out of job, too. So it is very important to make sure the numbers are lower. Put a couple less than what was supposed to be, so in case somebody does come in, we're not over.
The one concern Mr. Patil have, which is a logistical, reasonable concern, is what if he's got the full lot and the twenty-six cars there, two in the bay, twenty-four in the lot, and a tow truck drops a car off in the middle of the night, which happens in this business for repair? That's a concern he has. So I've expressed to him, why don't you stay a couple cars on there, so if that does happen, you're fine.
But essentially, I'm here to do a good thing, help the town, make it look better by employing people.
You've done that. I've understood.
And I don't want to waste your time or give, waste the inspector's time to come. There's no reason for that. And I invested all my livelihood, all my savings into this. So I would ask you to please allow me to continue, and I'll make sure that we're on the numbers that we're supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, thank you.
Does the board have any other questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Take up the motion on this license, sir?
It's.
Why don't we just take it up while you sit there? Let me just do that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Class Two license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Route Twenty-Eight Motors.
The motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
I am going to vote in favor of your license again for this coming year. I think, trust what your lawyer says, you have gotten the message. You have made improvements to the property. I, too, don't want to see another vacant lot on Route Twenty-Eight, so I will be voting in favor of your license.
I agree.
As am I, because your attorney and I had a very lengthy discussion today, and I think he stressed to you the importance of make sure, you know, the one thing I want to stress is the last line here, subject to all regulatory department requirements. You know, you gotta, I understand, you know, you're trying to make a living, but, you know, thirty-two, thirty-three cars are a lot more than twenty-six. Thank you.
Mr. Prisco.
No, and I appreciate you making the investment and getting some counsel to help you, try to help you understand what the rules and regulations are. I think that's, that's good. It's valuable. I will be voting in favor of it as well. And I hope next year, when we see you, you'll need that kind of counsel. And we appreciate the commitment you've made to the community, and I agree that it looks a lot better over there, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much. Mr. Masary.
I just heard a commitment, and I expect the individual to keep that commitment.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, one up session.
Mary Gussman.
Item eleven, I see that proprietors of Center Cafe.
Steve's back.
Yeah, Steve's back, too. Go to item eleven. Center Cafe reconsideration of November eighteenth vote. This is on for discussion. It's not on at this point for votes to reconsider. The applicants had requested us to reconsider. Mr. Valiakonis put it on for us to discuss whether or not we will reconsider. So open it up to that discussion, see if there's any willingness to reconsider at this point in time. I believe that what was submitted to us was a revised parking plan. We all received it in our packets. Mr. O'Leary.
I was present at the last meeting, as you're all aware of that, but I did have the benefit of watching. You were all, you all need an agent.
No doubt about that.
No doubt about that. Honor of life, right? The, in all the years I've sat here, I don't think that I've ever seen this occur. And there have been other establishments where we have denied licenses, and they've appealed to the ABCC, and it's been adjudicated at that level, demanded back sometimes, upheld. Whatever happens, happens. I just think, first of all, from a precedent-setting standpoint, I think it's of concern. I think the board has to be cognizant of, you know, every time the board takes some action, we can't be rehashing the same issues over and over and over again, just because they throw out a piece of information at us. Well, how about this, and how about that, after we've already taken action? The Del Greco's have already filed an appeal with the ABCC. I think in their attempt to probably avoid future litigation, maybe there was something else that they could alleviate some of the concerns of the members of the board. I just think it's a, it's a bad precedent for the board to get into, whereby, once we take an action, which requires public hearings and requires a whole host of actions and activities, as well as appeal processes through the state, I think it's just a bad precedent to set. Secondly, as was pointed out at the meeting last, the last meeting, a motion to reconsider must come from someone who's on the prevailing side, which was the no side in this particular case, Mr. Fode, Mr. Prisco, and myself. In the absence of a motion to that case, to that effect, the board would not move forward. As far as, you know, a motion being made by one of the three of us, if we opt not to, it can't be considered. And I would urge my other two colleagues to seriously consider not doing that, rather than taking an action and voting down, taking a negative action. Just don't take any action. If one of us were to make that motion, then anyone else on the board can second it for the purpose of discussion and action. As far as us considering, and I know that they've submitted some new plans, that's outside the venue of a public hearing. I happened to be in town hall on Thursday, and I was sitting there, so I did happen to take a look at them. But for us to consider anything new outside of the public hearing venue would be inappropriate. So I just think it's a bad idea, and I would urge the board to take no action. I would urge my other two colleagues. I have no intention of making a motion to reconsider. I don't know what Mr. Prisco or Mr. Fode's intentions are. I just think we've, we've acted on this thing now, this application, three times. Lots of discussion on it over the last couple of months, and I think it's time to let the timeframes run its course, which are, again, set out in statute. They certainly have every right to go before the ABCC, which they've done twice before, or three times before, or two times before, and see what happens. But the ABCC has upheld the majority of the board's opinion at least twice before. I don't anticipate any change. I just think we need to set this aside, let the time period run its course, and then move on to action on other items.
Mr. Fode, Mr. Prisco.
I've had a discussion with Mr. Del Greco. Yeah, I let him know that I won't be bringing it up for reconsideration. And I appreciate the effort he made with trying to bring new information, but I think we got to let the process, we got to follow the process, stay within the process. And even what I looked at in the package, it just, for me, doesn't satisfy my concerns. And I think I've been very open and honest about my concerns, so I'm not going to be requesting reconsideration.
Did I put myself in this position? Don't you ever learn? I'm going to go out and for punishment.
Raise your hand.
I've thought long and hard about this for the last month, since we originally took it up. And, you know, based on everything my two colleagues said here, too, I'm not ready, I'm not prepared to bring it back up for reconsideration.
All right. I think we have it. It's what we said. We don't have to take any action on any motions. We're not going to take it up for reconsideration. Mr. Valiakonis, on the water rates, is the department head coming in on that?
No. We, because of the fact we hadn't received a recommendation to go on your packet. We recommended deferral until your meeting in January.
Fair enough, okay. So table, item ten.
Minutes?
No. Sorry. Okay. At this point in time, we're going to go to item thirteen, appointments, reap appointments.
Yeah, the license unit was in twelve.
I'm going to do that. Deal with the issue.
Okay. That's fair, I guess.
My finance committee.
Mr. Herbert.
Yeah, I didn't know that either. I didn't know.
It's like to be heard.
So we're not going to do water rates.
No, again, we hadn't received a recommendation from the water commissioners until late this afternoon.
I liked it, yeah. I would hear.
Sure.
Yeah. You didn't get it till late this afternoon?
I didn't see it.
Because they voted on it last Thursday night.
It was about three o'clock this afternoon, I believe. We all received an email from the chair.
Yeah, I was in the water commissioner's meeting. They voted in favor. The finance committee voted for that also, too. We have one concern, and that, and Mr. Caliber has to speak to it.
Well, let him speak.
You can't push a lady over the cane.
Well, at this point, I'll go back to the water rate issue to just hear the recommendation from the finance committee, see if they have this even. I'm not going to have them come back.
Finance committee did, did vote, by majority vote, to recommend the increase. And our, the reason that we did was that we were concerned about bigger spikes and increases. It was talked about at the last meeting here, and trying to stay ahead of the curve on operating costs that are, that are escalating, that we capture those costs in the rate. The one part that did give us concern, because none of us could answer, was how much should the reserves, the retained earnings be? The plan was put in place a few years ago to pay back the half million dollars or so that would have been used from some of the other funds to operate the water department, and it looks like that amount will be back in there by the end of this year. And when that plan was put in place, the hope was to raise about a hundred thousand dollars more than the, than the cost, and that would be paid off over, over five years. Well, it's being paid off more rapidly than that, and that's fine. But it kind of begs the question of what should be in that reserve, what is it used for? And it would seem to us that it is to be used primarily for capital, but secondarily for rate stabilization. If there's some, something happens that is out of the ordinary, that spikes the rate, it can take care of it in that year and not, not necessitate a rate increase. Well, operating costs going up by two or three percent a year is not a, is not a spike, that's just a cost of doing business, and that needs to be addressed in the rates. But we want to come to some recommendation at some point before next year as to what the reserve should be, what the appropriate level is, and what is the long-term plan for getting there. A hundred thousand dollars that was, was used was more a factor of the half million dollars that we were short and spreading it out over five years. So talking about needing to raise an extra hundred thousand dollars a year, I don't know whether that's the right number, it's too high or too low, whether it should be, whether it should be something else, but I think that needs to be addressed. Finance committee is very willing to work with the water department and the commissioners to have our liaison to that, those groups, work with them to establish that. We'd like to see that in place within the next twelve months. That's our, that's our concern.
Has that been expressed to?
Yes, I'm the liaison to the water commissioners.
Thought he was talking about.
She's got the cane.
After, yeah, well, our commissioners meeting, the evening after the finance committee had the discussion, I suggested the finance committee would like to work with the water department in working on some, Mr. Foddy, I believe, was there.
There we go. Mr. Messeri.
Yeah, I think the, Don is, I think, you know, right on target here. There's, there's three elements of what we need to deal with. One was paying back what was borrowed because the water rates were insufficient.
Right.
So once that's paid off, then we're dealing with the two items. Actually, one item is, it's actually three items, if you think about it. One item is associated with, similar to what the Hillview does with retained earnings, the issue of the environment, you know, what Mother Nature's gonna present and how that impacts water usage, which has an impact, a significant impact on water usage and then water revenue and water cost. Second is, there needs to be some retained earnings to cover, well, it's, to cover that spike. And the other item for retained earnings is related to having capital, to fund a capital plan.
Right.
So when that dries up, then, as everyone knows here by now after reading the paper and everything, that we're moving forward with new sources of water, and we're gonna have to make capital investments to achieve that goal. So I would suggest, Greg, if it is possible, for the water department to go back over the past five years, maybe even further back, and try to determine what the swings in water, it wouldn't be dollars, because dollars would be meaningless, but the amount of water, that's consumption, that's been, and, you know, then we can apply some rates, you know, take our current rates and say, okay, on average, we're here, and this is a peak, and that might help us arrive at what we need to deal with the swing.
Mm-hmm.
And then from a capital point of view, I think we need to do some more work to come up with what we should be building for capital.
There needs, there needs to be a capital plan, a long-term capital plan, and then you can look at what you need to, to fund that, either in cash or for debt service, but that needs to be in place, and eight hundred thousand dollars doesn't sound like the right amount, but I don't know what it is because I haven't seen the capital plan.
Mr. Foddy.
Don, I think one of the other things too that we spoke about last Thursday is what do we gotta do with the monies that are in those funds also? I mean, you know, the plan three years ago was to put the money back, but of course the next five years, there's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will be in there when it's all paid back by the end of this year.
Right.
And it's just sitting there, sure. You know, the finance committee, the water commission, and I would even think, you know, town staff, Greg and, and Mr. Cannavale, and Mr. Clark would want some input in that, but I think we need to start looking at what we're gonna do with that as opposed to just, just sitting there and then us borrowing money for capital projects.
Well, that's the point, is it going to be used, it's gonna be used for debt service, and what kind of debt service would it support, and what is the, what's the capital plan, and how is it gonna get paid for, and what's the, what do you need to fund that, that capital plan? So it, it's a, it's a bigger picture than just what do we do with the eight hundred thousand dollars.
And unfortunately, the capital plan, I agree, we should have a five or a 10-year capital plan. The problem we're gonna have is, depending on where we get in our water in the next five years, is gonna have, so we can do something for our, our own infrastructure, our pipes and stuff like that, but as far as how we get that water here, and where it comes from, is gonna have a huge impact on our capital plan.
The good news, Don, is that we have some, maybe crude, but estimates of costs associated with the path that we're on.
Right.
That we need to present.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back now to, I have thirteen appointments, reap appointments, and to the zoning water appeals.
Mr. Delaney. Mr. Chairman. Again, I was not present at the last meeting. I expressed my, some of my concerns to you through text messaging that evening, we've not spoken regarding the matter personally about it because of yet. I have some real concerns as to how this was handled, what was done, what wasn't done, and I'd just like to say a few things up front. First and foremost, what happened to the Board of Appeals is, is on call for, and those that were up for reap pointment. I'm not my brother's keeper, he can surely, certainly speak for himself, ask him, Mr. Dmitri, and Mr. Keys, and Mrs. Platt, and Mr. Nelson. So I'm gonna talk briefly about a few things of what occurred. And if nothing else, I know that we've succeeded in increasing viewership for our meetings over, for the wrong reasons, and that being said, I wanna welcome everybody who's tuned in this evening from home. Anyway, two weeks ago, I was over a thousand miles away at the time of our last meeting, and my phone starts ringing and text messages began rolling in because of what occurred at the meeting. I found myself dumbfounded, at a loss for reasonable explanation, disappointed, and then angry. So as a result, I find myself compelled to react this evening. But before I get into the specifics, I want to publicly acknowledge and assume personal responsibility for not only my actions, but more importantly, my inaction and tolerance over the past four years, four-plus years. I say inaction because I believe that if I had acted sooner and spoke up sooner, we may not find ourselves where we are today. I first got elected public office here in town forty years ago this past fall, and elected to this board over twenty-five years ago. I've served with hundreds of dedicated and decent public servants. I truly appreciate all of the support I've received over the years, and serve with pride, and hope that I represent this community well. For the first time in all these years, I feel embarrassed. This community deserves it better from their elected Board of Selectmen. We have proven ourselves incapable of policing our own behavior. Our tolerance of disrespectful behavior undermines our ability to attract people to serve. Our department heads and appointed boards do not want to come before the board and report their activities and endeavors for fear of criticism and public ridicule. Town hall employees see members of the board entering the building during operating hours and breathe a sigh of relief when we walk by their door or office and pity the coworker who has to deal with us. It's wrong, and I'm truly sorry. What happened at the last selectmen's meeting was wrong, was also wrong. Every member of this board knew I was going to be out of town. In response to an email from our secretary regarding upcoming appointments, all members received my response to her, which stated, I quote, "I indicated to the chairman and other members that I would be out of state on the second and not attending the meeting. I do not anticipate any problems with the suggested reap pointments, therefore I have no problem with the board proceeding with the reap pointments without me. If there is a question on any of my recommendations, I would request that the vote on these reap pointments wait until our next meeting." In the packets sent to each member of the board prior to our meeting, under item number nine, appointments and reap pointments, the following was included. Mr. O'Leary will be out of state, will not be attending the meeting. He has requested if the board have any questions on any of his recommendations, that the board wait until the next meeting to vote. One member of this board chose to disregard this request. No respect was shown or given. One member of this board chose to publicly call into question the character, integrity, and ethics of long-serving, dedicated, and professional volunteer individuals seeking reap pointmen, as well as other seated members of the board. One member failed to express his concern regarding reap pointments through a phone call to me as a liaison, or even a phone call to the affected appointees. Instead, he took advantage of the opportunity of his bully pulpit to cast false dispersion on these individuals without them being present, without me being present, without so much as a courtesy of a phone call, cowardly and shameful. Shame on him, shame on the other board members for allowing this to happen. Only one member of this board had the decency to call me the next day to express concern for what and how things transpired. That was Mr. Messeri, whom I have the utmost respect for. I know that he too is bothered, not only by this specific meeting action, but other actions also. Too many people have fallen victim to this disrespectful, insensitive, and bullying behavior. It has to stop. The members of the Board of Appeals did not and do not deserve this. Mr. Belikonis did not and does not deserve this. Mr. Cannavale and Mr. Fair did not and do not deserve this. To those and others, once again, I'm sorry. Going forward, I will do better and do more to try to avoid the allowance of such activity. I may not succeed, but it won't be due to lack of effort or silently sitting by and allowing it to happen. In closing, I would like to point out that Mr. Prisco expressed his concern about appointees being a representation and reflection of this board as the appointors. Well, I would like to remind Mr. Prisco and my fellow colleagues that we are a reflection of the voters who put us here. I'm proud of these appointees, and they deserve reap pointmen, not what they got last meeting. We, on the other hand, can and should do better, because right now, we are a poor reflection on our community and the people who sent us to serve. We can and should commit to do better. At the beginning of this statement, I said that we have proven ourselves incapable of policing our own actions, while I'm also calling on the public to assist us by policing our actions through their actions at the ballot box, elect people who really do reflect your values, your concerns, and your best interests. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Call on Paul O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I should have spoken to my brother before this, because he took a lot of the stuff I wanted to say. But I do have a few other comments I would like to make. With great regret, I find myself and fellow board members standing here before this board to respond to allegation made, allegations made by Mr. Prisco on November fourth and December second at the selectmen's meetings. He has called into question the integrity and character of myself and other board members of the Board of Appeals. He chose to make the allegations publicly and has left us no choice but to respond publicly. Mr. Chairman, I would first like to have myself speak, and then the members of the board speak.
Sure.
In response to the allegations against the board, and then followed by the allegations against me. So I'd like to make a statement pertaining to his allegations.
Yeah, listen, Chairman, sorry, I haven't made any allegations yet. I haven't, I haven't, I haven't had no chance to even.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Prisco, I have, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Leary.
He had his say, but someone else had his say.
Hold on, hold on, I think I can run this. I'm going to give him an opportunity. Michael, you and I have spoken. You said what you did two weeks ago, you know how I feel about some of your comments. I'm gonna give Mr. O'Leary an opportunity to respond. You're gonna have your opportunity. Every member of this board is gonna have an opportunity. Members of, every member of the CBA that's here will have an opportunity.
Okay. I am responding to allegations that he made against myself and the other board members on November fourth and December second. That's what I'm responding to. And I'm not gonna be here tonight to get into a back-and-forth dialogue with Mr. Prisco.
No, I told you, in our discussions, you have the right to come up.
That is not gonna happen.
Speak.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we find out where I left off here. Okay, we are not the first public officials to fall victim to Mr. Prisco's unofficial, excuse me, unprofessional, offensive behavior. I would like to share a few facts about the members of the zoning Board of Appeals. I have been a member of the board for twenty-four years. Jim Dmitri has been a member for sixteen years. Joe Keys has been a member for fourteen years, John Nelson, eleven years, and Jennifer Platt, eight years. So if Mr. Prisco believes that this board is not dedicated to this community in the community's best interest, he is surely mistaken. I would first like to respond to the allegations made against the members of the Board of Appeals that sat in on the hearing regarding the appeal from the high school by DeBones. Mr. Prisco has stated that the actions of the board were unprofessional. He was making reference to a verbal altercation between the sitting chairman, Joe Keys, and two members of the secondary building, our school building committee. The verbal argument lasted thirty seconds to a minute, and it was over. Based on this, Mr. Prisco has stated that he has serious concerns as we go forward having the individuals on this board. My response to you, Mr. Prisco, you have taken thirty seconds of one particular meeting to publicly discredit hard-working, dedicated people for your own personal satisfaction at their expense of their reputations. Instead, you should be looking at the thousands of hours and thousands of hearings that we've, that have occurred without any issues at all. And for the record, I went to the town administrator's office and the Board of Selectmen's office to review the files of the Board of Appeals, looking to see if there were any complaints on file. And as I expected, there were no complaints ever filed against the Board of Appeals. These good people are not only my colleagues, I also would describe them as very good friends. I am very fortunate to be able to serve my community, being able to sit next to these people, and I want to publicly thank them for their dedication and service. At this time, I'm going to ask other board members to address their concerns, and after they address their concerns, I'll then come back up and address allegations against myself.
Thank you.
So, are there any board members that would like to come up and speak?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just real quick, I don't wanna belabor the points that have already been made, but I can speak to the November fourth meeting where my name was brought up, and let me tell you, serving fifteen years, it's the worst kind of feeling to have your name brought up, without the benefit of being there to answer questions or to be talked to in private beforehand. That, that's my biggest issue. I really have a problem with that. It just sounds like that, you know, in that kind of situation, someone's got an axe to grind, and, and, you know, one of the things that I was told when I first joined the board was, you know, we don't want members on the board with an axe to grind. I mean, it just, it's not good for any of the meetings, it's not good to represent the town that way. You're supposed to be fair and impartial. I think that, Mr. Chairman, you and I could both agree that, you know, we had a heated discussion, it was over in a few minutes, minute at the most, we moved on. We've had a discussion about what happened after, I think we cleared the air, I don't think there's any issues.
We did, and as I said to you though, if you were up for reap pointmen, I would've reached out to you.
You would've reached out to me.
And then see how, where that would've went, because.
Right. But you wouldn't, you wouldn't have done it at a board meeting without me being here or anything else like that.
I may have done it differently than Mr. Prisco, granted, but I, I did have issues about how you conducted that, that year.
I appreciate that. And I would just expect that all the board members for the, for the Board of Selectmen would, would show that common courtesy to any of my board members or any, or any other person serving the town of North River. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Jennifer Platt. I've had the privilege of serving on the Board of Appeals for the past eight years, and I take the position very seriously. We really strive to represent the best interests of the town. I, and I'm sure every other member of the board, are always open to discuss our actions with the Board of Selectmen, and to see if there's any way that we can better serve the town. That's what we're appointed to do, that's what we want to do. My issue, as with Mr. Keys, is we weren't given an opportunity to have that discussion, to have issues brought up in a public forum without any opportunity to have notice, an opportunity to respond, and furthermore, without any substantiation to those allegations. I feel it's very harmful for both our relation, our working relationship between the boards and our ability to best serve the town. I would expect the board to reach out to us directly anytime that they do have a concern, because we wanna hear that, and we wanna be able to respond. And without that communication, we can't be doing our best job for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the CBA?
Dimitri, how are you?
Great, thank you.
I'll put my glasses on here, read some notes, if you don't mind. Read some notes, if you don't mind. I'd like to just say a little something about Paul O'Leary. Having been Paul's friend for many years and serving on the board with him for many years as well. Regarding Paul's character, I have great respect for Paul O'Leary. I've known him for over 40 years. He is the most honest, trustworthy person I know. Regarding Paul as a volunteer on the Board of Appeals, I have served on the Board of Appeals with Paul for over 15 years and have witnessed the following. He's a good listener, is willing to consider what is said on all sides of a debate. He's able to ask questions that get to the heart of the issue. He is courteous to applicants, lawyers, abutters, and spectators, but firm when it is necessary to bring in a rambling lawyer, a disrespectful person, or an unreleased spectator. He's a creative problem solver. He is fair, open-minded, and has common sense. He has outstanding leadership abilities. In summary, the town of North Reading is lucky to have Paul O'Leary as a volunteer on the Board of Appeals. In regards to my other board members, I'm honored to be serving with these people. John's a businessman in town, has a lot of real estate experience. Jennifer Platt is a lawyer with great legal expertise. Joe Keys, also another lawyer with lots of real estate experience. So, thank you.
Evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
I don't want to belabor the point, but I do want to echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. For those of you who've been to a Board of Appeals meeting in the past, I typically don't have a heck of a lot to say. I don't like to hear myself talk like a lot of us do. So I just kind of like to listen here and vote. I do want to echo the sentiments of these guys and also say that Paul has been a neighbor of mine since I lived on Adrian Drive until he sold his home. A great neighbor, great friend, great board member. I think you guys didn't do yourself a good service with your comments that I watched on YouTube. Frankly, I would like to get those 10 minutes of my life back, but I did watch it, and it was disappointing. Thank you.
Yeah, fellow board members, nice words. Now I'm going to speak to the allegations that Mr. Prisco made against me. I've got stipulated a few facts here. Here's some of the facts for people that don't know. An appeal was filed before the Board of Appeals in relation to the new high school project. Being an abutist of the high school project, I recused myself from participating in the appeal before the Board of Appeals. But as a citizen of this community and a direct abutist of the project, I have the right to be involved and participate in the public meetings. Mr. Prisco, you overlaid that I acted inappropriately, unprofessionally. You have stated that you witnessed me working with the board and guiding them during a recess at one of the Board of Appeals hearings. My response to you is that this is totally untrue. The sitting board members have years of experience and expertise. They don't need for me to tell them what to do. If you think, Mr., think about it, Mr. Prisco, do you really think that I would attempt to influence my board in a public forum with four members of the Board of Selectmen present? Really? No. Wouldn't happen. I don't actually recall the instance you're referring to, but if there were a recess, then yes, I would. I would go up and be with my friends and wait until the meeting reconvened. So if I'm guilty of that, then I did it. Mr. Prisco, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight if you had called myself, Joe Keys, or any of the other members. You chose not to do it. You chose to come out here in a public forum and call our character and integrity into question. That is so wrong on so many levels. And I know you have my phone number, because you called me about six months ago seeking my help about the septic system in your neighborhood, and asked me to look into the situation to make sure everything was above board at the Board of Health. I took your call, I took your request, and I went down there. I sat down with the health agent, the building inspector, I reviewed all the plans, I went through all the files, I did everything that you asked of me. I reported back to you, there was nothing wrong. Mr. Fair did exactly what he had to do. If he didn't endorse the plans, we'd be, the town would be being sued for taking this man's lot that's developed in the property. So then, you proceed with that information, knowing that Mr. Fair did everything that he was supposed to do on behalf of this town. He's a 30-year employee, a very good man, dedicated. You then take him into this forum, again, another public forum, for you and your neighbors to publicly go after him. This is so characteristic of you in how you treat people and disrespect them. It's disrespectful, how you treat other members of this community, whether it be the town administrator, the DPW director. I don't have to go through the whole list, because I think my brother already...
Mr. O'Leary, I'm going to keep, ask you to keep it to...
It's to the, it is to the point. It is to the point.
Keep it to your issue, please.
I'm trying, but it's all tied in, the way that the members of this community, as far as the town hall and the employees are treated, and the appointees. It's wrong. And he, Mr. Delaney, is the key offender. He tries to intimidate and bully people, okay? And he told me I didn't follow policy. I actually went into the town administrator's office last week, and I said, "I would like to see the policy." There isn't a policy. He says, "But we do have a visitors' policy, and it's expected that the employees of the town of North Reading follow that policy." And it clearly shows that you're supposed to be respectful of others, which he is not. So it's not just me or this board. You're not supposed to try to intimidate or threaten people, which he continuously does. It's wrong. And this board, as my brother spoke earlier, is guilty by association. You allow it to continue.
Well, I'm going to, I'll do that, I'll disagree with you. We all, we all have different styles.
Absolutely.
We all have to live with whatever style we are great with, all right?
Absolutely. But my point being that you allow it to happen, okay? You allow him, whatever, but let me just move on. Let me just move on.
Please.
Okay, thank you. So, I was very torn whether or not to share this next piece of information with you. And it's very difficult for me to do, but I find it necessary. First of all, Mr. Delaney, you've attended all the Board of Appeals hearings, as did I. And I worked behind the scenes and interacting with you as a member of this school building committee.
Yes, you did.
And the abutists to try to accomplish, to bring you to a common goal to get this issue resolved, correct?
That was my view, Edith, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And your view? You've been to every hearing. Did I do anything inappropriate or unprofessional in relation to my position, whether I be on the Board of Appeals, or what I did to try to help this community?
In my opinion, no.
Thank you, for your honesty. This next piece of information I'm going to share with you is a discussion I had with Mr. Prisco after a secondary school building committee meeting. He approached me in the parking lot, and he came up to me and said, "You better make sure your board does the right thing, you better make sure your board does the right thing and supports the secondary school building committee, because if they don't, there's going to be significant ramifications." Well, clearly, this is part of the series we're...
Oh, you are.
But to follow up, excuse me, excuse me, you'll have your time. To follow, to follow up with that, I immediately contacted my brother, because he is the liaison to the Board of Appeals, told him what happened. I followed up, I went to the town administrator's office, told him and put it on notice what happened. Gentlemen, could you attest to that?
Yes.
Is that true? Okay. I then asked the town administrator to, I wanted to use of town council. I need to find out what my rights are. This man threatened me and intimidated me to influence my board's vote. It doesn't get any lower than that. And I held, I held this in for a long time and thought about it, because initially, I was really upset. And I thought about it, I don't want to go after this man's character publicly, I'm going to keep it to myself. But afterward, he started to other town officials, include, not even town officials, going after the skeuaries in their home and making threats. Enough is enough. We've had it. So now, I'm not going to speak to that.
Yeah, well, you brought it out, but you, you weren't there.
I was not there. Where?
You were at the skeuery home when that was alleged to have occurred, right?
I was not there, you were not there.
Right. Just like I said to you before, I don't know, I know one issue Mr. Prisco has in terms of, you referenced it, in terms of, at the recess, the last ZBA hearing, you immediately came up to the front of the, I witnessed that. But what did I say to you? I have no idea what you said.
The reality of it is...
I have no idea.
Absolutely.
I'm not saying you did anything improper.
In the reality of it is...
I have no idea what you said.
In the reality of it is, I could have come up and said, "This meeting is crazy. You want to go over to the shoe for a couple of drinks afterwards? This is tough."
That probably would have been a good idea.
Probably would have, okay? But I certainly did go up there to try to influence my board.
And I'm not suggesting that you did.
Okay, okay. So, in closing, I have something I'd like to read. This is to the members of the Board of Selectmen from the zoning Board of Appeals, Paul O'Leary, Joe Keys, Jim Dimitri, Jennifer Platt, John Nelson. Dear members of the Board of Selectmen, please accept this letter as a notice of our resignation from the town of North Reading Zoning Board of Appeals, effective immediately. It has come to our attention of the zoning Board of Appeals that during the November 4th, 2013, and December 2nd, 2013, meetings of the Board of Selectmen, the character and integrity of the zoning Board of Appeals were called into question. None of the members of the Board of Appeals were present at these meetings to address these charges, nor were they given notice that there were any issues or concerns on behalf of the Selectmen. Together, the current members of the Board of Appeals have given over 70 years of service to this town in their positions as board members. During this time, not a single complaint has been filed in the town over the professionalism of our meetings or of the conduct of any of our board members. It is our, it is, it is the opinion of our board that we can know, we cannot continue to voluntarily serve the community in our position so long as the Board of Selectmen continue to publicly question our integrity and character without notice or opportunity to present or be hurt, be present or hurt. Very respectfully, town of North Reading Zoning Board of Appeals, signed by all five members. I'm going to submit this to you, Mr. Chairman, regretfully. I'm going to ask that before you take a position tonight on the appointments before you, myself and Mr. Dimitri, I'm going to ask that the board take the position on whether to accept or reject our resignation. If the board votes to accept it, we're all okay with that, we'll find other ways to serve the community. If the board rejects it and finds that we do serve our community well, and we do have the best interests of the community at heart, then you can reject it, and we will respectfully withdraw it and continue to serve this, this community so long as this board changes the way it treats its employees and appointed officials. Thank you very much, you're not, be retired.
Yeah, Mr. Delaney, I gave you that call, and I did apologize to you, because I did one thing wrong. The only thing I did wrong was I did bring up your name, and I did bring up the reasoning for it. But you have to understand, I struggled every day over the months that I witnessed what I saw going on, which I will go through. But I did make that one tactical error.
Mr. Chairman, I think I'm just going to leave the room. I've said my piece. Mr. Prisco can say whatever he would like to say.
I mean, I am going to give him that opportunity. You're welcome to stay.
I was not afforded that opportunity a couple of weeks ago when he took in...
And I just apologized to you. I apologized to you on the phone that night, and I apologize into the committee now. That was a tactical error on my part. But I was struggling with a lot. I witnessed a lot, and I was struggling with a lot. And I apologize to you, and I apologize to all the board members. That was wrong of me to bring it up the way I brought it up.
When did you apologize to him? I'm sorry.
When we were on the phone. I did tell you, I, didn't I tell you, I made, that was a mistake I made, I shouldn't have done what I did, but I was struggling with this issue. I was, I was in conflict with this whole issue, whether to even bring it up or not. But what I kept witnessing and witnessing over the months was starting to bother me. But I apologize, and I, and I know you're not going to accept my apology, but it's sincere, and I mean it. But I'm going to, but I'm going to outline why I had this concern, okay? And it goes back to the very first ZBA hearing. And it was a pretty quick one. I mean, I was here, and when it finished up, Mr. Keys was caught by one of the SSBC members, Mr. Delaney, had offered him up some ideas to think about, some consideration ideas, and he, the way he replied, and I was behind him, was, "I need to bring this back to Mr., bring this back to Paul," were the exact words. And it kind of gave me this concern, and I didn't say anything, didn't say anything to Sean. I've kind of left it in there. I'm going to fast forward now to the October 15th meeting, because a lot transpired between that. You have recused yourself through this whole process. Allegedly, you recused yourself. I go to a meeting on October 15th, it's an SSBC meeting, and I finally hear there is some progress in the dealings between the two parties. And I think the difference, when I walked out of that SSBC meeting, it was a Tuesday evening, we were going to be meeting with the ZBA that, that following Thursday, there was a difference of 30 trees. 30 trees. We come here to this meeting on October 17th, and this is where it fell apart for me, and where I got a lot of concern. I really, major concern, I probably should have come to you then, but I should have come, I couldn't go to Steve, because there's a conflict there.
Why is there a conflict?
Anyway.
There is no conflict.
30 trees. We come to the meeting here on the 17th. You start your meeting, and there's a complete disregard to this deal that was being drafted. There was stuff being, Mr. O'Leary, you participated in the meeting from the back of the room, you're interjecting new ideas. Mr. Keys was dis, completely disregarding this, the fact that this thing was so close in, yes, I don't attend any ZBA meetings. This was probably one of the very first couple that I had participated was related to this issue, okay? But to have this complete disregard for it, I was shocked. It turned into a very heated argument. There's a 10-minute break. Mr. O'Leary, you get up, you walk up to the front of this desk, you meet with the acting chair and the fellow board members, and they all gather around you. I came up here to have a discussion with one of the SSBC members. I heard you clearly state, clearly state, "Any money that's granted needs to come out of contingency, not out of the landscape budget."
That is not true. That is not true, absolutely not true.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Listen, hold on. You can make all the accusations about me.
This is not, you know, this is germane.
No. Listen, this is not shared. They put a lot of eyes on me tonight.
You're going to talk about fairness?
Time out.
Well, that's a complete lack of vocabulary.
Everybody had the opportunity to beat up on me.
Oh.
Okay?
Oh, how does it feel?
Oh. You haven't seen anything yet, right? That's how you want it.
Thank you for the threat.
Gentlemen, please, give him an opportunity to say what he wants to say. Everyone had an opportunity to speak. Mr. O'Leary, if you want to respond, I'm going to give you an opportunity to respond.
So, listen, I heard what I heard, okay? And then, directly following that little meeting you had before we went back into session, you walked over to the abutists and you had a very similar conversation with them. Now, I didn't hear you, but I had been talked, other people had come to me with the same concern, and you said the same thing, that you're a person that recuses himself, doesn't engage in the process like that. That is very concerning, and there's a lot been going on.
Mike, I'm just going to stop here one thing. I think it's very, very difficult for anyone to say, based upon what someone else told me, I know what this person did.
Okay. I agree with you. Because that's what's happening with...
That's not, that's not right, because you don't know whether or not the information you're getting is accurate. I think all, all anyone can do is based upon what they observed, what they heard, and that's...
Point of information.
That's it.
Mr. Chairman, most of the dealings, most of the dealings with the secondary school building committee and my brother, it was only one of them.
Listen, this isn't right, Mr. Delaney. I, you gave everybody an opportunity, and I, and I let it go.
You don't believe, it was anything that crossed the line. You've already said that.
I said it in terms of what I witnessed, of my dealings.
Absolutely.
Let me, let me, I'm going to state it, I'm going to state it again. In my dealings with Paul O'Leary, in terms of efforting a settlement between the sides, I didn't experience hear or see anything that I thought he did that was unethical.
Okay.
That's me.
Right.
Okay? And that's all I, that's all I can say.
Okay.
I can't speak for what someone else said, heard, or saw.
That's fine.
And we've talked about that.
A point of information. Just because I, just because I accuse myself as a member of the Board of Appeals, I have every right to interact at the hearings, or wherever, whoever I want to interact with, as a citizen of this community and also as an abatta. I don't give up my rights. So, whatever conversations they may have had or not had with somebody else, I'm entitled to have them. I don't give up those rights because of my, on the Board of Appeals. I just thought that was important, this information.
Continue, Mr. Prisco, please.
You, you can believe the rights, okay? But the rules are not for everyone else and not for you. And when you recuse yourself, you don't have those kind of, you don't interject yourself like that. And to me, when you were standing in front of your fellow board members, and I witnessed it, I was right here, I watched it, you can't pull them together and you can't influence the discussion or lead. You, you can laugh all you want, but I saw what I saw, and-
What did you say? Sorry, go ahead. Okay, just be honest.
And then, we, we come back out of the meeting, and then the meeting actually falls apart. It was a screaming match, was a lot of disrespect going back and forth, and I'm sitting back there and I didn't even understand how this could be, how could we even be in this position? When we were thirty trees apart, how did it all fall apart? That's what I didn't understand.
Can I address that part? Just real quick. First of all, I don't think it's-
I, I really don't think that it's fruitful to, to, to rehash a zoning Board of Appeals meeting here at the Selectmen's meeting, especially when it occurred over sixty days ago and everybody's recollection. I don't remember what I did yesterday.
Mr. Keys?
Number one.
You and I, Mr. Keys, I'm going to stop you there, you and I spoke about this.
Okay.
He's right. We walked into your room that evening, the difference was, the building committee proposed seventy-seven trees, the abutters proposed an additional, additional thirty trees. That was presented, you allowed me to speak first, I get up, I presented it that way. And it's not directly related to Paul, but it's an issue here. And what happened was, you completely and utterly disregarded how close the parties had been worlds apart for about ten months. We come to you, we're about this close to having an agreement, and you disregarded it and went down a different road. And the road you went down was requesting, was suggesting we should put brooms in each one of their properties with trees. Now, that, as I said to you, was a little suspect to me because of the fact that it had come back to the building committee, that they, the abutters, requested access to their property through the school project, and they were told that. They couldn't do it in the timeframe because the square had been formed.
All right, let's talk. Can I talk about that a little bit too?
So that's, that's why it looked a little suspect-
Okay.
-to me in that meeting, and I had no idea why you, as the acting chair, would completely disregard where the parties had come so close when we came into you.
Fair enough, fair enough. I, I don't want to speak for, for the other board members that were sitting on that, but in my opinion, and you can disagree with me, you guys never even got that close. You were always miles apart, in my eyes, okay? Prior to that meeting, the day before the meeting, I went and visited the site. I went there and then actually, Jennifer, you and I went and visited the site later that afternoon. It was right around when the broom was pretty much complete, and, and honestly, coming into that meeting, and you say it went down a road that was different, it's because I saw the broom in its full glory. And that thing, and I'll say it again today, is huge. It's way bigger than I imagined it, it's way bigger than what it looked like on the plans. Granted that the numbers were on the plans, but it doesn't do justice to the size of that damn thing. Excuse my language. It's huge, okay? So then I walked around the property. I took a look, there's a fence there, it, it came up on my own. I looked at it, why can't we just remove this fence? We have all kinds of equipment right there, and that's the road I went down at the zoning board meeting. You guys stood up and said you had insurance issues, you had change order issues, you had money issues. I had a drop at that point. I, you may not feel that I did that, but I-
You, you-
Let me just, let me just finish.
I want to get back, I want to get back to the main, I'm going to let you finish.
Okay.
But I really want to get back to the main issue why we're here, but this issue has come up regarding how you conducted-
Right. I, I had, I had no intention of bringing any of this up, you know, but that's the reason I went down that road, is from going out there and experiencing it firsthand, okay? When we came back to the meeting and looking at the plans at that night, and it just, I never got the feeling from your board, the secondary school building committee, that you truly understood what they were looking for. And, and, and-
Because you didn't, you didn't listen to me.
No, that's a matter of opinion.
The first five minutes of that meeting-
I listened to everybody for eleven months.
I know.
Eleven months. I listened to everybody for eleven months. And I, should have never gotten that.
We're not here to re-
That's fine, okay.
Previous hearing.
That's fine.
I asked the board to take the position on our resignation.
I'm going to let him finish.
All right, I'm, I'm done, because it's, it's just, listen, I'm trying to express to you so you know why I was so concerned, because it looked like funny business to me.
Mr. O'Leary?
I don't care.
Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you.
You know, Paul, the rules can't be for everyone else but you. I'm sorry. You recused yourself-
Mr. O'Leary?
And you, you engaged-
I'm getting an opportunity to speak.
You engaged in the discussions, you can walk out, you can be upset because the facts are the facts, and there are twenty-two-
Please, just continue.
Because this has a lot to do with it.
Mrs. Skewley, I'm going to allow you to speak.
I have, I've-
I'm going to allow you to speak. He's going to be allowed to complete his statement.
Right. Well, this has to do with that. The Zoning Board of Appeals, Paul O'Leary-
Mrs. Delaney, I want to finish this opportunity. I'm going to ask you to take a seat, please.
Please, let me finish.
And I, you'll be able to speak.
They said a lot tonight, and I haven't even had ten minutes, okay? So I'm going to finish. I have the right to finish, and you can go ahead and leave, you can pack up your stuff. You had your chance to take a pound of flesh, so let me finish.
I had, you did that-
No, he didn't have the opportunity.
You did that two weeks ago, Mr. Prisco.
Listen, I apologize for that, so let me finish.
You only did it four weeks before that.
Okay. You're not going to turn this around to me?
Mr. Prisco.
Let me finish, okay?
There's nothing to turn around. We're not the bad guys.
Just continue with your facts.
Oh, I know.
So, I'm going to reiterate where I was, okay? I'm going to backtrack a little bit. So, I saw you engage, and I saw you engage the abutters. Again, I'm feeling pretty strongly that when you recuse yourself, you do not engage like that. Then the meeting starts up, we have that craziness, the meeting comes to an end. Weeks go by, I'm concerned. Weeks go by and we still don't have a signed letter. It made, and I came to this meeting that night, when I brought up what I did, I was concerned. I'm hearing rumors that it's going to go back to the ZBA. Why? Why is this? You know, the SSBC members, I went to almost every one of those meetings, and I, and they all felt bad for what happened. Nobody, there isn't one there that had, that are happy with the way this whole thing turned out. But there's twenty-two members over there that really weren't treated very well, and it did seem to me that there was some kind of conflict going on with your involvement in the process, especially when I heard the, you interject about the funding. It brought me major concern. So, that's why I acted the way I did. Now, I'm going to go and talk about how you, how you feel about me and how everyone else feels about me around this town hall. That's not my problem at this point, I can't fix that anymore. But the problem I think a lot of people have is that they don't like the fact, if I see something that's wrong, I'm going to call it out. Maybe you don't like the tone I use, maybe you don't like the way I do it. That's fine, you don't have to. I know that what I am doing, I'm doing because I see something that's not right. And maybe for years and years, we've turned a blind eye to a lot of things that go around here, okay? And now to the Skewleys. You know, I did go to their house, I absolutely did. I never said that we were going to have a man-to-man conversation, it's a term I would never use in my entire life. I tried at that meeting with, with Mr. Skewley, just, because I knew if he got rid of the lawyers, the two parties could work together, because the SSBC members truly wanted to work with the abutters on this issue. And when you have the lawyers involved, it gets ugly and it gets expensive. That's all I was trying to say.
Can I just say, as a lawyer, I find that offensive?
Anyway, it gets expensive, and you cannot argue that point. And the SSBC members are reasonable people. They really wanted to work with the abutters, every abatta. And, Mr. O'Leary, the fact is, that we cannot, you cannot interject and lead this in a way that you did, and it was upsetting. And I, and from the outside, and I wasn't the only one that saw this, and I'm not asking anybody to stand up tonight and defend me, I'm a big boy, I can handle this. I saw what I saw, it was wrong. What was wrong from my part was, I didn't come to all of you and share it with you. And I struggled right up to the minute I even brought it up. And it is done what I've done. It's all I can do. I value the ZBA members, I value, Mr. O'Leary, what you do, and I appreciate the support you've given me in the past, even on that issue on my street. But it doesn't take away the fact that I can turn a blind eye to something I think I saw that was very wrong. And what you did, in my eyes, wasn't right, and it's not right. And, you know, it's, it cost the towns, the taxpayers money, it may even have cost the Skewleys and Nelsons some money, I don't know. It doesn't matter, the fact is that you should have just stayed out of it. You shouldn't have been engaged at that level, and it's wrong. And if I, if the roles were reversed, it would, you would have been doing the same thing, okay? And this thing that I said to you, that you, you suggested I said to you in the parking lot, is absolutely a hundred percent not true. I'm not a threatening person, I would not threaten you like that. You can go ahead and make this, listen, you can go ahead and try to take this tack where you're making this about me, and you can act like you're the victim, but you're not a victim here. You, you, you know what, at least I apologized for the mistake I made with bringing this up in open session last meeting. Absolutely on my shoulders, I take full responsibility for it. But what's funny is you're going to sit there and laugh and say that you didn't do anything wrong, to me, is insulting to every one of us, especially the SSBC members.
You have the opportunity tonight to take out the whole board.
I don't want to take out the whole board, I don't even want to take you out. I think you provide, you provide a great value to the town, and so do every member. I don't want to accept that resignation, I hope you don't, but there's nothing wrong with all of us learning a little bit about how you, I'm learning, and I'm certainly going to learn from this experience, I can tell you that, but do you think that you have no room to learn? Do you think-
We all have room to learn. I'm not going to dispute that fact at all.
Okay.
But you-
And one-
I just want to respond.
Go ahead.
Okay, the role that I played in this whole thing was to take, I got involved with the secondary school building committee through Mr. Delaney, Mr. Venezia, and Mr. Karucci, okay? And met with the abutters, which I called, I never even knew these people. And the mom that's in their backyard, I can't see it, so it doesn't affect me, it has nothing to do with me personally. I just saw, again, people see the perspectives differently. You saw that the school building committee was trying to do the right thing and work with these people, and you go to their home and tell them to drop their attorneys, okay? Because you thought it was better, okay?
Working with the town, I did think it was better.
And I believe you-
Because I felt bad for spending that kind of money.
And I believe you probably felt that, okay? But the reality of it is, the school building committee, secondary school building committee and these people were miles apart. And I saw that right from the onset, from the first Board of Appeals meeting. And I saw this, I said, "This is going to be a disaster. This is a train wreck ready to happen." So I took it upon myself to contact Sheila Nelson initially, introduce myself, because she didn't know who I was. And said, "I'd like to offer to help you." I says, "I think you need some help here. You seem like you're outgunned, you're outnumbered." And I said, "I want to see the right thing be done." I then went to Mr. Delaney, and I spoke to him about it. I want to see if I can get involved in this and try to bring the parties together for the best interest of the community and all, and all the parties involved. That's what I did, okay? And, Mr. Delaney, did you sign the agreement tonight? I wasn't here earlier.
We did.
You did?
We had a res-
Do you unanimously? Be honest, do you think there was any possible chance that that agreement would have been on this desk had I not been involved in this?
Probably not.
Okay, thank you. And I think it was in the best interest of the town to try to get this document signed so the Board of Appeals didn't have to make a decision against another town board, because that was clearly what was going to happen, in my opinion.
I, I would have, an issue is I don't think that would have been the correct decision. We've talked about it.
And that's your opinion, but there's, but the reality of it is, it's the opinion of the members of the board, and based on the way that the, the meetings were going, the Skewleys and the Nelsons were entitled to some type of cure as to what happened to them, okay? That's the way, would you agree? That's the way that it was going. You guys were negotiating with these people to try to do something, okay? It was, you were looking for a cure-
Okay.
-to the situation created. That was my involvement. My involvement brought that agreement to that desk that you signed tonight.
I'm sorry. We, we're going to have to disagree or disagree.
That works perfectly for me, because I don't want to talk to you anymore.
You don't have to. You don't have to, because that's not recusing yourself. And we, listen, Mr. O'Leary, let me finish.
As a member of the Board of Appeals, I did not get my right up as an abatta or a citizen. You don't seem to get that. You don't get to take those rights away from me as a member of a Board of Appeals. I can't sit, I can't vote from up there.
You, you were up here, that was the issue, and you were actively-
Okay, gentlemen, gentlemen, let's not go and turn it to a doctor.
Mr. I asked, I asked that the board take a position on this right now.
I'm going to let, I'm going to let Mrs. Skewley speak.
I'm not done, I just, I need another-
Let me-
Okay.
Much sense to say what I have to say now, and I'm not going to go back over all of the steps that we have taken to get here tonight. But the decision that was made between the fifty trees and whatever came after that was because of me. It was not because of Mr. O'Leary. Sheila and Mike were at that meeting in October, they came home and showed me what was presented, and I said, "No way." They hadn't seen that point when they were at the meeting, but I pointed out my thoughts about what I thought about that, and then they saw my point. It had nothing to do with our attorney, it had nothing to do with Paul O'Leary. We had very little involvement with Paul O'Leary, and like he said, if it wasn't for him, we wouldn't be here tonight. And like he said, if it wasn't for him, we wouldn't be here tonight. We wouldn't have that agreement signed. We're not happy about anything that has taken place in the last year. But if any good comes of it, the exposure of the wrongdoings that are going on among some public officials is one good thing, because hopefully, that will change and that will stop here. Because this is a good town. We've lived here for over 25 years, never had any issues, never had any involvement with town government. And I don't wanna ever have to do that again, nor would I want anybody else to have to do it. Our backyard is never gonna change, it's never gonna look the same, it's never gonna look good. It's disgusting. And I pity the person that I have to try to sell my house to. Thank you, Mr. O'Larry.
Finish. I'm almost done, I'd just like to finish.
Please.
Mr. Skioli, what you just said is actually a perfect example of what we see and what reality is. And I believe you when you say that Mr. O'Larry had nothing to do with your ultimate decision. But with the way it looked, and the appearance of it, with him being involved, especially in the private discussions with the ZBA members, it's not right. And at that meeting on the 17th, you know, I keep hearing that the ZBA is a place where you go to when you have two parties that are separate, they mediate it, they bring it to consensus, and either everybody goes home happy, or everybody goes home equally unhappy. That's what I've heard about the ZBA, and I believe it. But when we finished that meeting on the 17th, it wasn't good. I didn't walk out of here feeling comfortable, and I felt like something was very wrong. And so, I'm not going to apologize for that. I'm not gonna apologize for questioning what I saw and what I heard. I apologized, and I, I am in support of every member, and I don't wanna accept your resignation, and I don't wanna cause that resignation. But if you resign, that's purely up to you. But I will not change one thing. When I see that something's wrong, I am gonna question it. Now, can I do that in a better form and a better manner? Absolutely I can. And I certainly will work on it going forward. There's no doubt in my mind. But I am gonna stand the way I feel, and what I felt, and what I saw. I know what I heard, because I heard it, and it wasn't right. And the SSBC deserved a little bit better than treatment than that. And there's 22 volunteers on that board, and not one of them feels very good, because you look up at what's going on at that school project, and I know in your backyards it doesn't look good, but that's a hell of a project up there. And those 22 people manage a hell of a lot more than what this board manages. Me manage 55 million. They're managing a hell of a lot more than that, with a lot more responsibility. And, and my motivation really was to defend them in some way, because up till now, they really have been, really haven't been given an honest chance to get this rectified with you.
They've had a year to rectify. I think that's an honest chance.
Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to accept the resignation of the-
Mr. Skioli would like to say something.
I would like to speak, please.
Sure.
First of all, I'd like to, Mike Skioli, Tower Hill Road. I'd like to thank Paul O'Larry and the Zoning Board of Appeals for hearing our appeal. I'd also just like to say, Mr. Prisco, we talk about inappropriate behavior. You came to my house twice, we spoke. One time, there were a few, quite a few people there, and you spoke that you were using us as a platform to have PMA dismissed from the job. Okay? That, to me, is pretty inappropriate behavior, but we, we let it go by, okay?
I'd love to give her a PMA. I'd like to hear what I had the power.
Okay, well, don't use us as a platform. If you were concerned, you should have stepped in, and we wouldn't have that 25-foot mound in our backyards right now, along School Hill and Tower Hill Lane. Okay? That's number one. Number two, we spoke again, you and I, by ourselves, and you come up and said, "You should drop the lawyer, drop the lawyer. Town has deep pockets." We don't need that, okay? No, okay, I'm standing here as a liar. Okay? I'm standing here as a liar. Okay?
That's fine.
Okay. And furthermore, if you felt bad, the SSBC, they didn't do no justice what they did for us, okay? Including Mr. Delaney. His actions were inappropriate at the SSBC meetings also, okay? And he knows what happened there, and there was a lot of behind the scenes, and it wasn't good. Maybe this whole town can move on and move in the right direction.
Mr. Skioli, seeing that you came after me just now.
Yes, I didn't come after you, Mr. Delaney, but go ahead.
You just did. You just made a statement, all right?
Yes.
So I, I really wanna move on with this meeting, but if we flashback to January, when the trees came down, the first member of that building committee, and I'm not looking for a pat in the back, but people have shot memories, the first member of that building committee to step up was me, to try to do something. Quite frankly, very quickly, it was noticeable to me and other members of the subcommittee that was formed, that you, your wife, and the Nelsons were unreasonable. There was no workable agreement we were going to reach. In fact, the building committee even suggested to you, the first meeting of council was at, that we tabled, we preserve your rights. Let us get down the road where it's more prudent to take a look at that area. And that's, and having you, you didn't wanna go. That's fine, that's your right. But, you know, for you to say there were some inappropriate things, I don't know what you're talking about, is I was the one that stepped up first. And I was the first one to try to help. All right? So take any shot you want, I'm a big boy. Take 'em, speak the truth, because I was there to help.
Did you tell the board that you offered us two-foot trees as a resolution? For the mound, two-foot trees as a resolution?
I'm not gonna rehash-
I don't wanna rehash either, but if you wanna get into it, I'm here.
Not rehashing it. Not the main reason why we're here. But don't get up and suggest that I did things that were inappropriate. I didn't. I had this best interest of this community in mind every step of the way.
Well, you didn't treat the Abadas that way, let me tell you that.
You know that's your perspective, and that's fine, you can have it.
Well, let me tell you one instance. When we brought the pictures and showed all the pictures of the berman, the beautiful work that was constructed behind our house, you didn't even have the decency to take a look at that. You shoved it to the person that was next, next to you.
I did that, I saw.
Is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay, well, I'm done rehashing it.
Fine. Mr. Osere, you have a motion?
I move that we reject the resignation of the entire Board of Appeals.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Why, why wouldn't you do it to accept their resignation, which is what they asked you to do, not reject it. They asked you to accept their resignation, and then we take a vote on that. Just, just as a friendly suggestion as far as your amendment.
Which board does the board wish to go on? It doesn't matter to me.
They asked us to accept it, moved to accept it, then you can vote no.
We have a motion that was made.
I'll second it. Hold on, what was the motion before I go? Because I'm getting it. Not to accept their resignation.
Hold on. Mr. Osere, restate your motion, please.
I move that we reject the letter of resignation from the Board of Appeals.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? A motion to reject the resignation of the Board of Appeals. We have a second for Ms. Prisco. Any further discussion? Hearing, Mr. O'Larry, were you gonna say something?
Yeah. Is it pertinent to the motion or not? I guess, you know.
Anything goes tonight, sir.
I mean, I just heard a lot of deflection and deflecting of responsibility, and, you know, and I heard that, you know, Michael saying that he expressed his concern, and this is over a month's period of time. The only concern that I ever heard expressed by Michael was at a meeting one night, and he asked me as liaison to express the concern in relation to how the Zoning Board of Appeals, particularly the chairman at the time, treated the Secondary School Building Committee. I went back to the chairman and the acting chairman, and spoke to them directly, as to express the concern that other members of the board had expressed. Mr. Osere had called me, actually, prior to Michael bringing it up, saying, because I wasn't present at the meeting, expressing his concern as to how the meeting went, the tenor of it, and the discourse. And again, I weigh his opinion, evaluate it considerably. So I did bring it back. I did express the concern. Members of the Zoning Board of Appeal had brought it back to them, they were aware of it. So it's not as though it was done in a vacuum. But that was just a short time ago. What I heard was a whole bunch of concerns over a month's period of time, and I don't know who we expressed it to. He didn't express it to any member of this board publicly, I mean, maybe he spoke to you. But again, since speaking with you and listening to you tonight, there's no concern as to how Mr. O'Larry reacted, or didn't react, or how he got involved. I know, I know, but I mean, I don't know who Michael was talking to.
He was, he was talking to me.
Oh, but, so you didn't alleviate his concerns? I don't know if you tried, but, but, okay, I just, I wasn't aware.
Let me respond, let me respond.
But I wasn't aware.
I did, I did. I expressed my opinion to him as to the efforts of Paul O'Larry being instrumental in trying to get the parties to an agreement. There were several people that got involved. You, Mr. Osere, this whole board got involved. Several members of the, of the building committee got involved.
But we went back in history, we went back months, and all of a sudden, you know, we expressed some concern. I said, "No."
He has, he has a right to voice his concerns. I don't particularly care how, it's not my way of doing it, how he did it two, two weeks ago, but that's the way he did it, and now he has to live with it. And I've talked to him about that, too.
And I apologize for it. But what I saw and what I witnessed is fact, it's fact, and it's wrong. And-
If he continues to say that it's wrong, I don't know what's wrong, other than your impression as to what you believe happened.
I'm just gonna roll his notches in the mouth.
You know, no, no, but I mean, give it a break. You know, he continues to cast aspersions on people, and he apologizes at the same time. You can't have it both ways.
I'm gonna take, I, we're good, I wanna, we got a motion on the floor, it was second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of rejecting the resignation of the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Now.
Can you rise again?
I'm back. Now you have the appointments of myself and Mr. Dimitri.
Correct. And I will say this, we didn't take any action on Mr. Dimitri, not because he was any part of anything, because he was part of the same motion.
You know that you have the ability to say, to separate that, and you did not.
I did not. And the reason is, the reason is-
That's not right. You had an issue with me, you should have reappointed that gentleman.
It had nothing to do. Honest to God, at that point, I wanted to get us, two weeks hence-
We just decided to table it.
Get past table.
Two weeks, there wasn't any discussion other than Michael's. I didn't watch the meeting.
Okay.
It wasn't.
There was no discussion other than Michael's.
But that was the point I was just gonna make, that was a-
I didn't want, we didn't want to have it.
The motion was made to table it altogether.
It wasn't-
I wanted it to be made part of the record, it was absolutely no reflection on this man's reputation. He had nothing to do with any of this.
No, that's why I said what I said.
But nobody said that. You just tabled the whole thing, you know?
Well, I said it now. It had nothing to do with him whatsoever.
Absolutely right.
So I don't, he had no involvement at all.
Moving poorly.
And, and just, if I could say something, Paul. I think if we had acted on one or not the other, I think it would have made things maybe worse, honestly.
No, what's fortunate is, is that there's two weeks between what happened and tonight.
What I'm saying is, I think-
Very fortunate.
Take it from whatever you want, how, how things transpired. I think if we took one and not the other, I think it would have been even, even worse.
No, I would have been just upset, really, no matter.
I was just saying.
So, with that being said, now the appointments are up for myself and Mr. Dimitri.
Yes.
And I am gonna respectfully ask Mr.-
Separate the motions.
Separate them, okay? The two appointments.
Sure.
And also, I'm gonna ask that, Mr. Prisco, I do not want your support. I do not want your vote.
You're not gonna get it.
Gee, that's totally contradictory as to what you said to me before, but that's okay. I don't want it, because I don't want you to think-
Because you're not gonna come in here and make accusations on me.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Okay. You can, you can come in here and make accusations like that, okay? You can't do it.
For both of you.
It's okay for both of you.
It's okay.
I'm asking, I'm just asking him respectfully.
You did.
Not to vote.
You did.
Can I finish, explain why?
30 seconds.
Because I don't want him to think for one minute that I'm obligated to him, and that he's ever gonna come and threaten me again because he put me on this board. Thank you very much.
Truth hurts.
Enough.
Truth hurts.
Come on, come on, we don't need any side comments. I mean, it's a difficult issue.
I've been getting beat up pretty good by these people, these lies, so I'm gonna define myself.
Enough, I'm not taking comments from anyone. Steve, please?
Really?
Yeah, really.
Gentlemen?
You're a big boy.
We need, that's enough.
The rule is for everybody.
Not too happy right now, all right? We have motions, we'll have singular motions, one for Mr. Dimitri, one for Mr. O'Larry.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination, the following name for reappointment as member of the Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December 31st, 2016. James Dimitri, 11 Oscar's Way.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, as liaison, I would strongly urge every member of this board to recognize Mr. Dimitri's service to this community, his tremendous service as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and reappoint him to the board.
Anything further? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
She and him is 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, before the next motion is made, there were some comments made at the last meeting that indicated that people, members of this board thought that I would be recusing myself from the appointment of my brother Paul as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and participated in the voting of, Paul is a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for probably close to 24 years. There is no conflict of interest, there's no need to recuse myself. My brother Paul O'Larry volunteers his services here, there's no remuneration, there's no financial reward, therefore, there is no conflict. And by the way, that's already been checked out by the State Ethics Commission years ago. So therefore, I will be voting on the appointment.
Thank you.
And giving my recommendation as liaison.
Mr. Phil.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination, the following name for reappointment as member of the Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December 31st, 2016. Paul O'Larry, 5 Adrian Drive.
Actually, it's-
It's actually 2 Tower Hill Road.
2 Tower Hill Road.
I moved.
All right, well, we need to tell the clerk's office.
If it was 5 Adrian Drive, we wouldn't be here.
2 Tower Hill Road.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Larry.
As liaison of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I would highly recommend that members of the board once again recognize the 24 years of service of Mr. O'Larry on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I can just say as an aside, that prior to his, excuse, when he first got on the board, the town of North Threding was involved in a significant amount of litigation as a result of Board of Appeals' actions. Since that time, and since there's been some new members, we're sitting here this evening on the Board of Appeals for the last 15 years or more, that hasn't been the occurrence. They've done an excellent job, and Mr. O'Larry deserves reappointment.
Thank you, Mr. O'Larry. Any further on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Full one, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening, and seeing this particular mission.
And once again, to the members of the Board of Appeals, thank you for your service, and I apologize.
I would rather buy-
If you'd like to give it back?
Keep it on file.
Thank you very much. What, yeah, just in case you need it. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night.
Sean, thank you.
We're on a roll with appointments and reappointments, one, we just kicked in.
The rest should go pretty well, I hope.
Is it two-minute recess? What's it gonna take, two minutes? We're back on, thank you very much. All right, back in session. Call the meeting to order again. Continue with the appointments and reappointments, Mr. Ford.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following name for reappointment as member of the Commission of Disabilities for a term to expire on December 31st, 2016. Four openings, Leo Aramato, 63 Central Street, incumbent.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any discussion? Nope. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following names for reappointment as members of the Library Trustees for terms to expire on December 31st, 2016. Two openings, Catherine Godfrey Scannell, 44 Boroughs Road, incumbent. Lorraine Sheens, 177 Hable Street, incumbent. Jeffrey. Jeffrey and Scannell, okay, sorry.
That's all right.
Second.
I apologized to her for butchering her name.
I have a motion, a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman. Both are incumbents, current Library Trustees, and I think we're happy to have them, and recommend them reappointing, reappointing.
Mr. Misery? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following names for reappointment as members of the Forest Committee for term to expire on December 31st, 2016. Two openings, Dana Rowe, 61 Adam Street, incumbent. Scott Stimson, 251 Swan Pond Road, incumbent.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following names for reappointment as members of the Martins Pond Reclamation Study for terms to expire on December 31st, 2016. Two openings, Janet Nikosia, 2 Popul Terrace, incumbent.
Jeffrey and Scannell.
Thanks. Janet Jeffrey and Scannell, 44 Boroughs Road.
Nope, you got the first name wrong?
Catherine.
Oh, my gosh. I'm lost at time. Catherine Jeffrey Scannell, 44 Boroughs Road, incumbent.
I have a motion.
Second.
Glad I could make you laugh.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
She's not up for another one, is she?
Not for another yet.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following names for reappointment as members of the North Reading Youth Services Committee for terms to expire on December 31st, 2016. Three openings, Frank Ferro, 15 Irwin Road, incumbent. Tracy Helms, 16 Demons Road, incumbent.
Motion, a second.
Just a comment that the Youth Services Committee as a whole, these two current members, have hit three home runs in the process of finding Youth Services Directors, just one after another.
We've been lucky. Yeah, we've been lucky. Any further discussion?
I just want to add that they're two very committed people to this, to this committee. I've had the pleasure of working with them for the last year, and I would wholeheartedly endorse that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following names for appointment as processing servant constables for terms to expire on December 31st, 2014. Three openings, Paul Dorsey, 18 Magnolia Road, incumbent. John Fierello, 1 Sullivan Road, incumbent. Douglas F. Lab, 130 Chestnut Street, incumbent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
All three are, they're paperwork in, fully committed. Obviously, John does a lot of the heavy lifting. Very lucky to have.
Now, we're capped on the number, I think that we can point, right?
Three.
Yes.
We haven't had any other applicants, though, correct?
No.
Last year, I thought we had one, but...
We did, it was Doug Lab, we, we...
Are they actively using it, you know?
Doug did something recently.
He's helped, Doug. Oh, he's brought things, two notices by the town within the last 30 days.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you guys, over the years, some of these things are light dormant, some is holding onto it but not using it, actively using it, if that's the case, that's good.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it, I'm just curious. I've been fortunate where I haven't had to serve, so it's good.
You've escaped it anyhow.
Still early.
Yeah, still early, yeah.
Right.
It's a bore, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following name for reappointment as representative of the Reading Municipal Light Department Advisory Board for term to expire on December 31st, 2016. One opening, John Norton, 279 Main Street, incumbent.
Second.
I got a second twice, so...
I'm gonna give it to Steve, because he's took my left.
To your left?
To my left.
It makes him to my right.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment on Mr. Norton, as you could see by, by tonight's, the information he provided us tonight, that he is absolutely engaged with the RMLD and does a great job, so I can't see why we wouldn't sit here and not endorse it.
I completely concur with that. So, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following names for reappointment as members of the Taxation Aid Committee for terms to expire on December 31st, 2016. Two openings, Mary Ann McKay, incumbent. Debbie Carbone, incumbent.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any discussion?
Just that, you know, Mary Ann, Depp, they are really the backbone of that Taxation Aid Committee. We're actually getting ready, beginning of the year, to start our next round of awards, grants, so without them, we could not be helping out the, the folks in town, so we owe them a lot of gratitude, they do a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Prisco. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following name for reappointment as a member of the Veterans Committee for a term to expire on December 31st, 2016. Two openings, Joe Vino, Joseph Vino, 11 Rock Street, incumbent.
I have a motion, or a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion?
Just a comment that perhaps we should have a Veterans Agent to see if she can draw up some candidates, you know, who I would think that Veterans Committee, Veterans would be the best candidates. She has substantial contacts. It's a shame that we only, we have four openings.
Correct.
We have one, one member.
And I imagine we can do these on a rolling basis, too, Mr. Bell, if someone were to come in, do we consider it? Okay. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following name for reappointment as a member of the Water Commission for a term to expire on December 31st, 2016. One opening, James Perkins, 22 Marvern Street, incumbent.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Uh, just, Greg, can we check, I think there's more than one opening. Not that it matters, I mean, I, I think there's only three sitting members right now. Not right now, just...
I think that in the, in the chair's correspondence to us today, I think he indicates there were two openings.
Yeah. Well, no, I think...
Two additional openings.
Two additional openings, correct.
Two additional openings.
And just to comment on Mr. Perkins, he, he comes to every meeting, he's engaging, he, he likes to get conversation going, so I would, I would recommend that he be reappointed.
I just think you should give a little more of a plug here, we've got an awful lot going on in this area right now, as far as what we're looking to do, and it may be of interest to, to some people.
I agree, I reached out to...
There's gonna be some action.
I agree, I reached out to two people I know are PEs, who I thought would be interested in it. They just said they're just so busy, but I will, you know, I, now that you brought up, I met a young gentleman who just got his, just graduated engineering school, maybe I'll give him a call.
That's good, you said, there's just so much going on now, for us, and it's gonna be busy.
I don't disagree.
We all talking about appointments and reappointments?
We didn't vote on that one.
Right, and, and Mr. Ragucci sent us an email tonight with the rates, but he asked, he asked us to, if we could take an effort on behalf of all the board members to try to find him some new members of the Water Commission.
I think he says get two openings, right, Mr. Ford?
Two additional after this vote, correct.
Why does it say one opening there?
I, I think there's...
They're probably expired terms, this must be the full term, but there's probably two expired ones, some of you didn't...
Right, I think there were two resignations, right?
I think there's only one not expired, yeah.
Well, they should, they should...
Right, there's one expired and two...
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. No license?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following commed vittual license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Beyond Bagels Inc., Dairy Queen of North Reading, Hillview Country Club, Horseshoe Cafe Inc., Joe Fish Seafood Restaurant, Kitty's Restaurant Lounge, Mario's Pizza and Subs, McDonald's Restaurant, North Reading Christopher Club, Ryer's Store, Sports Spirits and Steaks, The Lobster Claw Seafoods Inc., Teresa's Prime Grill 19, Wendy's.
Motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Just as a disclosure, I happen to be a member of the Knights of Columbus, dues-paying member of the local chapter here, which is also the Christopher Club.
Yep.
But a veteran officer, I have no financial vested interest in it, so just as a matter of disclosure.
Thank you.
Don't believe there's any conflict. Don't believe voting.
On the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I thought you were asking, I'm sorry.
I think that, unanimous.
Oh, you're in three.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following commed vittual all alcohol license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Hillview Country Club, Horseshoe Cafe Inc., Joe Fish Seafood Restaurant, Kitty's Restaurant Lounge, Sports Spirits and Steaks, Teresa's Prime Grill 19.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a question, just a quick question.
Mr. Prisco.
It says Teresa's Prime and then Grill 19. Do they need a specific license for the function hall, or does it fall under these two?
The license that you're approving, the commed vittual all alcoholic, covers the entire facility, so, so you approved it, and it's for the entire facility.
Great, okay, thank you.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just after the fact, on the, on this commed vittual alcohol, is that what it was?
Yes.
That includes the pool area for...
Yes.
Teresa's now?
I imagine it does.
Yes, we voted on that to include. Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following commed vittual wine malt beverage license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Mario's Pizza and Subs.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following package store wine and malt beverage license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Ryer's Store.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following fraternal club license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Loyal Order of Moose, North Reading Christopher Club.
Motion?
Second.
I have a second.
Same disclosure, as far as the Christopher Club.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Class 1 license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second.
But... I'm gonna read it.
Excuse me.
I was wondering who we were doing it for.
Someone wants to get out of here.
Bobcat of Boston Inc., North Reading Motorsports Inc.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, the records show that I will be recusing myself from any discussions and deliberations on the matter, as my, I have a relative that has a Class 2 license. Class 1 license holders also hold our rights as a Class 2 license holder. So I will not be deliberating or discussing or voting on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. I have a motion, and I have a second, I believe. Any further discussion?
Board members, just to point out, you can see that there are two Class 1 businesses that are not renewing. Dyer Sales, which is closed, and Premium Power Corporation, both of which hold Class 2 licenses, and they're not renewing. Power was 87 Concord Street. They assembled some type of trailers.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stay.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
4-0, one abstention.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device licenses to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Candlewood Lanes Inc., Kitty's Restaurant Lounge, Loyal Order of Moose, Sports Spirits and Steaks.
Second.
We did it when he was here. That's right. I have a motion, do I have a second?
You do.
I do, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following jukebox license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Loyal Order of Moose.
Second.
Motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the ABCC 2014 Renewal Certification.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's all we have for license renewals?
That's it, and that represents all minutes.
Mr. Chairman, just a question for Greg.
Yes, Mr. Misery?
Greg, with respect to these licenses, do we have delinquents still?
No, there are no delinquents, there's a couple people that were waiting on fees. We will not release the licenses on those, the small licenses that we haven't received the fees yet. But there are no delinquents.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 18, 2013 Regular Session Minutes as written.
Second.
Which one?
18th.
Motion, do I have a second?
I did.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 18, 2013 Executive Session Minutes as written.
Second.
On the motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 2nd, 2013 Regular Session Minutes as written.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
4-0, one abstention, Mr. O'Leary abstaining, he's not present.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 2nd, 2013 Executive Session Minutes as written.
On the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
4-0, one abstention, same reason, Mr. O'Leary, right?
Right.
We have Town Administrators Report.
Thank you. I attended a meeting today with staff about updating the virtual town hall website. They have a new product called Post and Go, which is a Windows-based program. They have a new product called Post and Go, which is a Windows-based program. Presently, we use a program under the first-class client. We have a limited number of licenses under the existing system, which greatly restricts our ability to keep the website up to date. We've identified this new package through virtual town hall. I'm very impressed with it. My staff is also very impressed with it. It will allow us the opportunity to refresh the website by having a new system, a new content management system that's available to us with unlimited number of licenses. And I went through and I met with my staff today, and our recommendation is we're gonna go forward with this. It'll take us about three months to roll it out. The upgrading cost is modest, we can afford it within the available budget that we have, but it really does address one of the concerns that the board had expressed previously about the fact that the website wasn't being updated, and this really does give us the opportunity to do so. Any questions?
No.
Good. I think it's good. It is good. I wanted to provide you with a memo that I received from Chief Murphy today. It's concerning intersection of Park and Washington Street, and as you know, through the public hearing process on the Gathering Center Cafe, there were some issues that were identified in terms of traffic accidents in that area. And although this is separate from the issue relating to the license itself, the police department did go out and they've decided that they will implement a couple of strategies. One is that the department did meet with the new owner of the North Reading Shopping Center, and you can see a report that's been put in here about some of the improvements that will be taking place in that area. The department will also be engaging in selective speed enforcement and additional traffic safety signs in the area. Again, independent of any action on the liquor license, we do feel that this intersection has been proven as one area that we do need to take a closer look at, and I wanted you to be aware of those actions.
I, I for one appreciate the proactive steps of the police department doing this down in that area.
The other item I have on my list this evening is there was some communication from town council about license agreement that administration is entering into with Lockheed Martin for access to the Stickney well site, and some of it came out in an email today, and I wanted the board to be aware of the fact that they've been approached by Lockheed Martin, who is going to be doing some testing and mitigation, which will impact the Stickney well site. And as part of that, there's been a one-year agreement that will be providing for work to begin for a one-year period of December, this year through December of 2014, which provides them access to the site. Given the fact that the site is located off of Redmond Avenue in a residential area, I wanted you to be aware of it. An agreement has been drafted by town council. I reviewed it. It's satisfactory to both of the parties. They intend to enter into it. Lockheed Martin will be paying for all legal costs associated with that. And again, the goal is associated with some of the groundwater contamination in that area and addressing some of the concerns and the mandates that have been put on them as a private entity to clean up that location.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Masery.
Can we take steps to at least alert the general of butters in the area that there'll be that kind of activity, you know, be proactive?
As soon as it's signed, what we'll do is we can send out a selected message to the residents in that neighborhood. I know it's a pretty remote area and there's not a lot of traffic through there. I'd be happy to do that, Bob.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vali Konos. Bring us to old and new, old and new business. Mr. O'Leary.
Just a couple things. Again, I wasn't present at the last meeting, obviously, and I would just like to acknowledge Mr. Vali Konos's service to the community. He read a statement which pretty much factually true, but still tough to swallow. But I think it's important to note that Greg has served us well over the last half years or so, and he served with ten different members of the board. Bond rating has gone up, we've had balanced budgets, enhanced our reserves, increased personnel and services all at the same time. Collected bargaining agreements have been signed, and got some concessions from our labor unions in relation to health insurance and then create buybacks and things under his tenure. We've had five positive debt exclusion votes. It doesn't happen in a vacuum. It happens because the public believes that we are in good fiscal shape. As our chief steward, he's done a very good job. Again, he's experienced a significant amount of personnel changes in his tenure here. Two police chiefs, two fire chiefs, all the associate superior officers in those two departments, firefighters, police officers. He's appointed two head assessors, DBW director, finance director, veterans agent, two U Services Director, now three, which is a newly created position. And again, he's put us in good stead as far as these new people that are on board. I believe our workforce is extremely stable now. We have a good leadership team, a lot of professionals, experienced people, stable leadership team, and for that, truly appreciative. He's thirty years in business, he's been here, and I wish you nothing but the best going forward.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Other than that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I hope Santa Claus is good to everybody. And just going forward, I just hope we can be a lot more productive and respectful. I'm gonna, I'm gonna work at it. I just hope everyone else does too. I wish everybody well.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Ford.
I just have one item. I think two meetings ago, Mr. Prisco brought up the fact regarding the food pantry and the fobs and all that, and I gotta give thanks to...
Thank you.
Mr. Vali Konos and his staff for stepping up. We had emails going back and forth. He stepped up and it got done within, within the operation budget of this town, so thank you for that, Greg. That's, that's money that, you know, can be spent to help people in need, so again, thanks. Only other thing is, and thank you to Mr. Prisco for offering to pay for it, but fortunately we found funds here. The only other thing I have is Happy Holidays, everyone, Merry Christmas, and Happy Healthy New Year. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Mr. Masery?
I do wanna wish our board members a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I wish that to the entire community, Happy Holidays for everyone. I would like to suggest that as a New Year's resolution, the board commit to improving our public image. I would also suggest, if we go back to our policy manual, that work on adding to the decorum and procedures section some language that reinforces our intent. I don't have that language at this point, but I think it would be a good adaptation.
Good idea.
That's all I have.
Mr. Prisco.
Anybody else receive complaints about recycling pickup on the board?
I've heard about them.
I witnessed, I didn't see.
Couple issues they've had. To my knowledge, JRMs have a couple trucks go down over the last couple of weeks, but in my experience, they come the next day and go out and recycling. I think the issue is in just notice going out. I mean, it's tough to get notice out to the general community when that happens, because I was actually coming out of our building committee meeting one night and we towed one of their trucks down 62. And I talked, just happened to be with Ed McGrath the week ago Friday, and we were talking about that. They've had issues with their trucks.
Last week.
I have to send an email to, after the second time that happened to Mr. Cannavale, he was very responsive. He had said the same thing that you said, Mr. Chairman. The only thing is, he said that he had wished that they had contacted him at least so he would have an answer if people called, so he's gonna reach out to them and make sure that they, that they give him a heads up. And one of the things that I had said, and I don't know how the contracts hurt Greg, so I didn't, I know some contracts say you have to have another truck in the city within a certain amount of time. I don't know if that's in there or not. I don't think it's a big deal, getting complaints, but it was a lot left out the second time.
I noticed it too.
Last Wednesday.
Can we do a code red for neighborhoods like that, or whatever the pickup was in, Greg? So if it does happen and they do contact Dick, you can just send out a phone call if it's been picked up.
That's a good point, and I've been contacted on occasion by residents with complaints about recycling and/or trash pickup, and if it's not widespread, we can make arrangements to accommodate the resident.
Last Wednesday, I was on my way to town hall, and the whole pathway from Polo Drive all the way down through the beginning of North Street was unpicked up for recycling.
Let me check the, the language in the contract.
I stopped in town hall to just say what I saw, and they were well aware of it, and they said that was being taken care of.
That seems to be the breakdown, is JRm contacting town hall, notify town hall so they can do something about getting a notice.
And if it's widespread, we should be able to do that code red for the phone call, just let people know.
I just wanna get clarification. When we agreed on the new trash barrel limits, we stated that during the holidays, we were gonna allow residents to put out more than the three-barrel limit, right? Didn't we agree on that?
I think what we discussed was if there was going to be some event to have hosting and things like that, you notify town hall, they're not gonna take any action.
Well, I thought we said on Christmas, we would, that was one, that we're all in agreement that we would allow people to put out extra barrels. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I just, I just thought that, I think we were expecting the contract to be reasonable around certain times of year. You know, I don't think expressly, you know, just like, you know, hello, gonna have a lot of extra trash right after Christmas.
So can we just make sure that Mr. Cannavale gets the message back to JRm that, you know, over the Christmas holiday, to make sure he picks up the folks' barrels when they have more than the three that they're allowed, just because it's the holidays?
I'll make sure that gets done.
I think that would be the right thing. Yeah, they should. We should encourage, encourage recycling.
You go with gift cards, you don't have the boxes.
I mean, I'm not sure if there's a way to get the message out to have people encourage them to recycle over the holidays, but we'll leave that up to Mr. McGrath. I'm sure he's got something up his sleeve. But I just wanted to make sure that we don't leave, 'cause I know they have been picking up people's barrels, but they've had more than three. But over the holidays, it's a little difficult. Let's see, yeah, the other thing I have on my list was the locks in order to thank Mr. Vali Konos, and I just wanna reiterate, the food pantry did not ask for the town to pick up that cost. They did not. That was my doing. They would, they would've been more than happy to pick it up. They don't want the town to feel that they don't appreciate giving them the opportunity to have the food pantry here. And that's, and then just Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy Hanukkah.
Hanukkah's over, all right.
That's it.
Thank you, Prisco. I just have a couple of things. I meant to mention at the last meeting that, I think, coming into the meeting, it was notified by a resident of Oakdale Road that, that 10th City and Dump that was forming up there had been completely cleaned up, so I extend my thanks to Mr. DeColer and his staff for being vigilant in terms of getting the message to the property owner up at Oakdale Road to clean up. I think it was a couple of days of fines helped in that regard. And also, I was, I received an email from a resident of Chestnut Street, just sending complete accolades to Mike Sorghin, as well as the private contractor, who I believe was Zanelli. There was a clogged water pipe extended through our property that the town was involved in in terms of rectifying that issue, and she couldn't speak more highly of Mike Sorghin and the private contractor, so we probably wish to thank them as well on her behalf. Other than that, I too wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I take the comments that I hear from Mr. O'Leary as well as Mr. Masery, and I will assure this board that if there were any times that I did unact properly towards a particular person, that I'm going to look at myself in the future as we move forward to try to curb my tone in that regard, and please, board members, call me out on it if you see me doing it. Make the tone, make the tone change. With that, Mr. Prisco.
Traffic light for the new school, I meant, I wanted to ask you. That's still a plan, right? They're still gonna do that. Is it possible for us to consider, as we go through the budget cycle, that we consider putting a light in at the corner of Central Street and Park Street in our budget discussions? We may not be able to afford it, but if you've been out there and you watch the kids go to school, that timeframe is, it's getting more and more dangerous at that corner. If you're coming past the, to drive up to Park Street and trying to get across to keep going, I mean, I've, and the traffic that goes up Central Street is, the lines are crazy, and we're gonna be spending the money, we're gonna have a contractor here installing lights. Is it worth us to give some consideration and discussion when we go through the budget more for safety and for controlling the traffic, something the board would be willing to consider?
Are you talking full-fledged, working, full-day?
No, not full-day. Just in the morning, just in the morning when the school's in.
Traffic light every two...
And then after a certain hour, it could just go to flashing red and yellow.
Actually, the suggestion might be just to make it a pit, which is a pedestrian, so only when someone wants to cross, they'll hit it and it'll turn red in all four directions.
Yeah, I'm not sure the pedestrians...
How does that work? That intersection doesn't line up?
It just, it just seems to become...
Yeah, it does.
Still be able to...
Still be able to put a light in? Just...
You're gonna get scared. It's where the horse path is.
Oh, we do?
That's what I was...
I won't say it is a horrible intersection, I mean...
I mean, I feel bad, I see the people I go by there in the morning.
I gotta tell ya, I'm surprised, but I see a young child, I think, going to the middle school, riding a bicycle down Central Street, crossing over, coming up 62, and I just...
It's really scary.
It is. It is sort of...
A young child, how to cut through Winterberry and Juniper. It's safer.
I'm not a roads guy or traffic guy, but it just seems like a problem.
It's coming from Ipswich River Park.
Oh.
Crossing, no, no, not coming down Central, coming all right. Yeah, no, coming...
Generally, I have an aversion to any more traffic signalization.
There weren't any here when you worked here.
No, there weren't any here.
No, but I would agree. You only need it in the morning, and then when the kids are getting out of school, the rest of the time, it should be just flashing yellows and flashing reds.
We still haven't taken care of that one at Havreland. Park Street, no right on red, heading south on Havreland Street at 11:30 at night.
That's bad. Well, contractors are in town, they're doing the lights, I'm not sure if there's any savings in us doing it while they're here. I throw it up for discussion. I know we had a lot of other things to pay for, but traffic isn't getting smaller in town, it's increasing. I think we have to have some discussion about it during our budget cycle, and if we're not interested in...
The only concern I have with a, with a traffic signal at that intersection is that it's a, there's a blind corner and he'll coming easterly on 62. So when you're coming before Central Street, you come up over a rise and around a corner. Michael O'Neill's place in...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can't see, and as soon as you come down, I mean, even now, 'cause someone's taking, trying to take a left or a right.
Oh, you jam up.
You have to jam up. And if you're gonna have a traffic signal there, there's no, no way around it, you know, it's gonna make it maybe a little, even a little more dangerous, I don't know. You gotta look at it.
I don't know. I just see what goes on in the morning and night.
It's a tough spot for a light.
We do an engineering study, as you know, and if necessary, you have to appear in the capital program at some point. So the first step is to undertake an engineering study and determine whether it's feasible.
It's only if the board members have the same issue.
I can attest it's a challenging intersection to get across.
Because right now, we have, the schools kinda divide up the traffic a little bit because some are going up Oakdale, and then some are going right into the high school directly. Now they're all gonna be on Park Street going, not gonna be separated at least that, two tenths of a mile. I don't know, something to think about.
Well, but now we got, they're not all going to school at the same time. It's still gonna be, still staggered timing between the middle school and the high school.
The school, the school traffic light will help in that direction.
Yeah, I actually think it may help.
Okay, maybe try that first.
I think maybe take the approach, give it a year, see how the school...
I don't live on Central Street, but I can imagine trying to get out onto Park Street's gotta take you 10, 15 minutes.
I've seen it in the morning.